Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 11th, 2016. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to start off the meeting, we're going to approve some minutes that we have the opportunity of reviewing. Jay will entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of February 4th, 2016, late start to school session minutes of February 1st, 2016, and acceptance of warrants number 32 P-16 and number 33 V-16.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
How are you today?
So good, how are you?
Good. Thanks for coming out on this chilly night.
Oh, no problem.
And for leaving the basketball game.
Yeah, that was hard, wasn't it?
It was good, yeah.
Yeah, it was good game.
Their senior night, their last home game and they're, I think, they need to win one more game to make it to the tournament and they have three more.
And who are they playing tonight?
Ipswich.
How are they doing so far?
They were win and win. I left, so.
It was like 12 to 7. It was a good game, really good game, so far.
Do you know how the JV girls did?
Um, I don't know.
They won.
Did they look?
They won, oh great. It was good. Alright, so it'll be a winning night, let's hope.
Yeah.
Hmm hmm hmm.
What else is going on at the school other than the two snow days that you've had?
Yeah. We are still setting up the catwalk for cancer that the student council is putting on. That'll be March 4th, about 7 o'clock. And we just wrapped up the play, Hello Dolly.
Yeah.
And that went really well. I was really happy with that.
I heard so many people loved it.
Oh, it was amazing. It was an outstanding show. Everybody was incredible.
Thank you.
It was really great. In fact, Carrie Donovan and Laura LePlume were at the basketball game. I said, "What? You have a night off and you're here?" She said, "Well, you know, it's, you know..." They wanted to see the girls, obviously, but they said it's kind of a little letdown now because, you know, they've spent so much time. Yeah, so they're looking for things to do on their free time.
Yeah. So the Sunday show that was canceled from Friday night, right?
It was packed.
Was it Friday?
It was packed.
So, so people still showed up? All that, and that was Super Bowl Sunday too, which was packed.
I think they had maybe two seats left. It was packed.
Yeah.
That's good. Good.
It's a good reason.
That's exciting. So anything else going on?
Um, that's about it. The Drama Fest group, Ally, Allison Arnold has written a play again for the second year. And she has her cast and crew put together and I'm not sure the date. I think it's the beginning of March that they go and compete with other schools and we'll see if they move on again this year.
Oh, that's great. That's good. And then vacation's next week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Had a little practice for their vacation weekend.
They did, a four-day weekend. Well, that's good. Thank you.
Not the whole public room.
Yeah. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? We have a special guest this evening. Mr. Marose is here.
Come on up, Sam.
His mom. And you're welcome to come up with him if you'd like, but definitely Mrs. Monjo.
Mrs. Monjo, yes.
I love the chair.
Yeah, come on up if you'd like.
Sam's mom, Andrea's here.
Hi Andrea, how are you?
You're welcome.
Proud grandmother Anne is here. That's nice.
Very happy to have you. We're very happy to have you too, Sam. I know you had a little scheduling conflict the last time you were gonna come, but I thought it would be really fun to have the committee talk to you because, you know, being a chosen member of Project 351 is really an honor. And I wonder if maybe you could just tell us a little bit about, you know, kind of what your experience has been?
Sure, so we basically, we all got in a bus, like, I think it was all of Essex County went in a bus together and we rode down to Faneuil Hall in Boston. And it was the whole, one person from each town got to go, so there was 351 kids in Faneuil Hall.
Wow.
And we all listened to, they interviewed Charlie Baker and he talked a little bit about like, what like kindness and charity means to him. And then, and then they had like these first graders from Roxbury do like their sort of speech on what Martin Luther King, I Had A Dream was.
Great.
And then, yeah, and then they sort of motivated us for what the rest of the day would be like by talking, like telling us a little bit about what it would be about. So then we went, everyone got, went into, went to different places. I went to Cradles To Crayons, which is a charity that like you donate clothes to. And like, what they do is they give the clothes to kids that can't afford clothes, so it's really good. So what I did, and they have like all different stations like clothing books and all that, and I, so I sorted clothing there. And so I sorted it into like boys' t-shirts, girls' pants, whatever. So, yeah, and then, so we did that for like, maybe it was three or four hours. So that was a lot of fun, sort of, yeah. Sort of knowing like that I was helping other people. I really liked that a lot and then afterward.
Did you get a chance to like talk with all the other kids and was there time to do that too?
Yeah, we were all in little groups, so I got to make a couple of friends from different towns that I wouldn't have otherwise met. And then we went to John F. Kennedy Library for sort of a wrap-up of the day and sort of, they basically just sort of ended the day off well there, so that was fun, yeah.
Sam, how were the kids selected?
I think it was like the teachers or something. They picked one kid from each town to go there.
Sam was nominated by his teachers. He's a very special individual and he, he's very humble, but he's very strong. And he has shown certain attributes of leadership. One would definitely be community in our school and he stands up for what's right. And he's done that and it's been, it's been really amazing to see him do that with his peers. And also, he's very passionate about the environment, so he's got some high aspirations for himself in pursuing that.
And he's a good basketball player.
And soccer. And don't you play quite a few sports? I think every sport, so.
Well, that's great. That's great.
So what was the best part about it, do you think?
Um, I don't have to say going to Cradles To Crayons and really sort of knowing that I was making a positive impact in really the whole state of Massachusetts. That was great, yeah.
Good for you.
Well, you know what I'm so impressed with in Georgetown just as a whole is the amount of community service all of our students do. I mean, you know, the requirement is there, but it's so many kids go way above and beyond. And it looks like you're well on your way to doing that too, which is great because it does make you feel good. You know, because people don't realize, or kids don't necessarily realize that there are so many people out there that really need financial help, emotional.
Because you're doing that, right?
Yeah, so I want to become an environmental attorney to save animal habitat really around the world, so, yeah, I'm really, that's really my goal.
Particularly interesting to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're certainly proud of you. And when I sent the information to Mrs. Monjo about, you know, do we have somebody that we would want to participate?
Oh, yeah.
She came right back with her name, so you were very, very strong, strongly recommended for this. And obviously, just meeting you here tonight, we can see why. Yeah, we can see why.
And then he gave up his day off.
Gave up his whole day off, that's right.
From school.
That's right.
Or he could have been having, you know, fun with your friends. You went and did that, which I think is very admirable.
So is it just the one, is it the one day, Sam? Or is there five, are there other things that?
There's other things. We have a spring sort of get-together at Gillette Stadium that I'll go to. And then we have in the spring and the fall, we do community service projects. They're just in our town.
And do you know what that will be?
No, I haven't decided yet.
So you, it's your choi, you would, you would have a choice.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. Well, keep us posted as to what you're planning to do. Well, we'd like to, like to follow that.
Yeah.
That's great. We're very proud of you. And I'm sure your, your mom and your grandmom is too.
Thank you so much for bringing him to his grave.
And job.
I would like to tell you all that there's a group of people that work at the State House and there's a weekly phone call that they give. I don't know how they do it, but a conference call.
Oh.
And so they're really teaching the kids how to, how to be leaders and how to transform their world and make it a better place to live. And it's just so cool to hear the different kids beeping in and calling from Nantucket and from Pittsfield and, you know, I just, I'm so delighted that Sam has that opportunity.
Who leads that call?
It's Carolyn. It's the Department, yeah.
She's the head, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a trained group of educators. And they're really encouraging kids and they have a whole package so that when he does do the program in the spring, they're teaching him with, they have a whole package that they give him and they walk him through it all and he has a mentor and it's really involved. So the support is incredible. Really happy for him.
Yeah, we're very happy for him as well. Proud. Proud to have you be our representative.
So Heidi, do we only, do they only nominate him?
One.
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 Okay.
So it's 351 towns.
Right, but he was pretty much, if he didn't want to do it, then you would have, you know, because that is quite, you know, it's intimidating. And it's intimidating too.
Yeah.
But that's great. I'm glad that you get to meet kids from other school districts and things like that. That's really nice. And Faneuil Hall's a great place to be.
Yeah, really cool.
That's great. Well, like the superintendent said, please keep us updated. I'd love to know how it goes.
I will.
So does anybody have a camera so we can take a picture of Sam?
I want a microphone.
Oh, I'm getting out of the way. No, Mrs. Monjo, you're in the picture.
I'll take a picture.
You'll take a picture? Come here. We'll take a little quick picture.
Which is, yeah.
Somebody who wants to come in can come in.
He's gonna be famous and then you're gonna want him to sign.
Exactly.
I know your strategy now.
One, two, three, cheese.
We're gonna get your autograph someday, my friend. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for making the time to come out. It's wonderful to meet you.
It was nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice.
It was like heaven, it was.
I know.
Especially on budget night. Thought we could use a little lightness.
Yes.
Be inspired by a little goodness. That's right. Why we open our doors every day.
Yes.
That's why we picked, I picked the cover with the children.
I love the cover.
Be smiling faces of the children.
We can't forget that.
Very much.
Did, so you don't have a budget binder?
She's just gonna have to go. Maybe she can.
Yeah.
I have extra, I brought copies in case anybody needs a popcorn.
Okay, so I guess we won't hold back. We'll just get right into it.
Get right into the budget.
We'll just get right into it.
Okay, so there, so, you know, I wanna first thank Joan again for working on the budget binder and putting it together and all the administrators for all of their hours of hard work. It was, you know, in many ways painstaking to put this budget together and of course, Michael and Barbie, you know, for working with us and providing leadership. You know, it took a lot of, it took a lot of meetings and a lot of thought and, you know, for every decision you make, you know, there's a consequence. So we have to figure them. We've been meeting with the reps from the town. Last night, we had a meeting with the FinCom and several of you were here, were there. You know, the news didn't look much better last night, but what was wonderful, I think, is, again, was a nice opportunity to exchange information in a way that was really positive, I think, in terms of, you know, everybody was receptive to, you know, the discussion and the conversation, because sometimes things can get a little tense, especially when you're talking about money and times when it's fiscally tight. But I, I think that speaks to the work we've all done with, with the community and with the decision-makers on the various boards to build trust and to build credibility and to have an honest discussion and dialogue. So I felt good about that. The outcome, you know, we'll see what happens, but I did feel like stuff, the information we provided to them was informative and I think they all were grateful to have more information. So, you know, I usually start my, my letter saying it's my pleasure to present the budget for this year, but you notice I didn't start it that way this year because, you know, it was, as I said, a budget that's, you know, got some challenges in it. The, the budget message certainly will be up on the website as part, I think we posted it today. The whole budget document is on the website. Is it just?
It's under the Budget and Finance page.
Okay, so if you go to the budget at the top and it pulls on the tabs, it's Department, Budget and Finance. You'll find the entire document with all of the background material as well. You know, I, I think the hardest thing about the budget this year is it started last year, you know, going back to 2012 when we got the override. You know, the, not only the schools were beneficiaries of that, but the town has been for the last, I'd say, five years, which is kind of typical with an override of $1.2 million. You know, we were grateful for the town's support. At that time, if you were around or following it, the, the situation in the public schools was about to get pretty dire. It was after the stimulus money dried up and, you know, we were really gonna cut the heart out of programs and that wasn't, of course, anything the town wanted or, or school committee or administration staff, anybody. So, you know, we were grateful for that override, but I think anybody who knows about overrides knows that unless other things change, you know, budgets continue to increase, even if they increase at modest levels, if, if you're not receiving the funding to keep things level, you kind of dig yourself a hole every year and then after about five years, you're kind of moving back into the same, the same challenges. So last year, if you remember, to get to the budget number, we prepared a 2.5% budget and got a 1.6. But even to get to the 2.5, we did have to make reductions, you know, in excess of $200,000. You know, we have a very, as you know, a very lean budget. We budget exactly on actuals and what we know. And, you know, we spend very little comparatively to many other towns on supplies and materials. You know, our technology isn't working on it, but it isn't what we want it to be. Our maintenance, we have these beautiful, we have a beautiful school and we need to have the opportunity to maintain it. That's a challenge right now. So I think that the, the situation in town, you know, I, I think we all believe the town when they say they don't have the money. I mean, we've seen the information. It's, this never would be about schools versus town departments because none of the departments have enough money and the taxpayers are taxed at a, at a high level. We, it, it's a scenario we all understand. Nevertheless, we have to open our doors every day and do what, what we have to do for, for children and do the best we can. We are a district that's always, and we got some confirmation last night from the FinCom, they understand we do a lot with less. They have looked at other school budgets and have acknowledged that our school budgets are, are very austere compared to what they see other districts spending on education. But at the end of the day, they look at the money that's available. We've said it's not, in my humble opinion, and I think others would agree, it's not really in this town a spending issue. But budgets, the public schools have the most money, but if you look at the budgets for the other town departments, they don't have much wiggle room either in terms of any cuts would be a cut to service. And that's no different for us. So I'm hoping that, you know, we, our long-range forecasting, I'm hoping that the town's gonna take that same approach and perhaps try to figure out, since it's really not as much a spending issue as it is a revenue issue, what is it that the town is going to do in the long term? Because we were joking last night that we wish we had a magic money tree, but I think the message that was is the leaves are all down. You know, we wish we had that tree, but the leaves are all down. So we understand the challenges the town's going to be faced with, but it is my obligation and the obligation of the school administration to present to you a budget that we believe will allow us to open our doors. But I have to be honest with you, it will be at a reduction of the level of program and service that we are used to this year. The level services budget for the schools for this year, if we just got exact, kept exactly what we have, would be $711,600, which would represent a 5.16% increase over the current year. Now, I don't know many districts that are gonna get a 5% increase across the state. I think the state, you know, has been discussing educational costs, educational revenue that they can provide. And there was a foundation committee, you probably followed that a little bit, that recommended some significant increases in the funding for education to have more realistic support for health insurance costs that are, but are not, not close to meeting the, the needs. And the special education formula needed to be adjusted and unfortunately, the state is growing, but in debt more than the money that they have available. So the money that's flowing to cities and towns is limited and we're finding that in Georgetown. Mike Farrell anticipates there's about $60,000 in new money that would come into Georgetown for all of George.
Total, for the whole town.
Total, for the whole town. So after going back and forth and really thinking about this, you know, we did get some early indication that there's, that we may have to have a level-funded budget. So for those of you who are new to the budget process, what that means is that we go right down to the same level we have this year, which would mean the $711,000 would need to be reduced from the current budget, which is a significant amount of money. I know I don't have to tell you that. The strategy that we are taking is that we are recommending a 2%, 2.03% increase in the budget. And what that means is that we had to make $432,000 worth of reductions, all of which were painful. It represents a reduction of, or elimination, reduction or elimination of five, the equivalent of five FTEs. So that's not necessarily five full people, but it's portions of, of a number of different people and it, it affects nine people actually in total. And also 4.2 FTE support positions that affect six people. So we have spoken to any people that might be involved and affected because it didn't feel right or fair to us to be having a conversation that maybe some positions could be identified and not have given people the opportunity to know in advance personally. So people have been spoken to, although, you know, there still are decisions to be made, right? You know, state funding could increase, the town could find more money. You know, I, it's not, it's, I always said it's not over till it's over, right? But at the same time, I did send an email out to the faculty letting them know that we were, we were having these meetings and that there, there were potential reductions. I didn't detail the reductions in that email because I said we hadn't discussed it here yet first, but that everybody who was potentially affected by it had had the principal or a director, someone spoke to them and let them know. So we, I just, I do need to have you make a change though, because Joan and I can't fig, thanks to Pam, she caught this. It's correct in the budget documents, but in the letter, it's not. So I, that's why I said to Michael, I need to make this change. We were going back and forth over emails with attachments and so when you get down to this paragraph that says, "Considering the answers to these questions, scrutinizing every line in the budget," we're gonna, you have to change the $13,802.254 to $14,082,842. The number that is there is the, the number in the column right next to it and we don't know how it got transposed, but we were going back and forth with it. So it's 14 million.
Good catch, Paul.
It's still the, it's still the 2.03% increase, obviously. And then down under the salaries, operations and special ed, so for the public's edification, I guess, our salaries show an increase of 1.90% over this year. Operations represents a 1.33% increase and special ed tuition should be 9.07396. And that is a 4.78% increase. 9.07396. 9.07396 and we'll, wait.
Wait, what is it?
9.07397.
397, sorry. And the percent is? Same, it's same. It's just those two numbers, if you look at your budget summary, those are the ones in the column right next to it. So I don't know how they got, I don't know how it happened, but we want to have it be right. Okay, so what we did in, is we, if we just kind of flip past my letter, one of the things that, you know, we talked a lot about is, so we're gonna present a budget that reduces programs and services, which is one thing. But in addition to that, there are a number of things that if we had had the ability to do it, we would add these things because there are needs that are real. So we talk about the technology devices. We're putting, trying to put a one-to-one in at the middle high school and I explain to you why that's important. One of the things is we're trying to get ready for the park assessment, which in 2018 will be online. And right now, we don't have the capacity to, to make that happen. And we also have state-of-the-art technology, thanks to the building project at K-6, and then we're gonna have students that are gonna go to the high school and there's gonna be a technology void. So this is something we've been talking about for a couple of years. We met today and we're meeting, you know, as you know, we went to New York to meet with the Apple people. But again, right now, that looks like that project will be fully funded by the parents. And that, you know, our hope was that we'd have some money in the budget to do some offsets to that, but right now, we have not put any money in the budget for it. Then also, we have a, a lot of teachers that now have the technology and we were wanting to hire an integration specialist, which would be a full-time professional who would have the, who would have the opportunity to work side-by-side with teachers and really make sure that, you know, they could work on instructional impacts. And we, unfortunately, our STEM initiatives and our STEAM initiatives really would be enhanced by that. Our goal of a makerspace in schools is something that we, we don't want to give up on, but having someone to be able to really use that space, manage that space and work with students in that space would really be an asset. But it isn't included in the budget, but remains a need. We have to be involved in upgrading our curriculum, which you know we've been doing every year since the standards changed. Last year, Julie talked about this next-generation science standards coming online. They're finally adopted. So we're, the vertical team is in the process of talking about what adjustments would need to be made to our current curriculum or new things that would be purchased. We also are continuing to build our leveled reading texts at Pembroke and we've been doing grammar study and we've presented you, to you how we've been moving that forward. Our goal was to move that into grade six. Again, there's no curriculum money in this budget for that. We're obviously going to try to look at grants and, and other sources if they happen to come along, but at this point in time, it's a void. And then, maintenance staff, we talked about this with the Finance and Advisory Board last night. We talked about it last year in the budget, that Pembroke would be coming online, all the fields and all the grounds. This fall, we didn't really feel the impact of this because the building project was still taking care of the grounds and the fields were being put in and planted. So, you know, we, that's why we delayed adding the position, because we said, "Well, you know, next year it'll be more important." And the custodian was more important in the last budget. We actually have a report that we'll make available to you that Mike got that details the recommended level three, you know, staffing patterns and duties of custodial maintenance workers. And we are down in custodians and maintenance workers in comparison to the level three standard. So there's levels one to five. Level five would be, you know, the, the max. We're operating under level three. We also told the MSBA when we built the Pembroke School that as a town, we were going to maintain at industry standards. So they're recommending, they're recommending four district-wide. Four district-wide, we have one indoor person for maintenance and one outdoor person for maintenance. And I think the thing that stands out for me is, we're talking about, this report talks about square footage. And so there are, we have 45 acres of land amongst all three schools. 30 of those acres is Pembroke. So we have one outside person who's been maintaining full-time the two, the other two schools. And now we're gonna add to one guy 30 more acres. It seems a relatively impossible task. I'm not sure how we'll manage it. The, the town has made a very significant investment in, in that, in the school and we have to figure something out, but that, that position, that position in maintenance is definitely needed. We are down a custodian. Mike seems to feel like we can work with that, except we're cutting another half-time custodian. So that'll cause further deficit. Interventionists at Pembroke, you know, as you know, we're in level three. We've been talking about the need to provide additional support for, for students that aren't necessarily special education but are having, have gaps in their learning beyond what the teacher can sort of deal with in small group instruction. So the goal here was to add a reading and add a math interventionist who would be able to work with those students in specially-designed instruction. Unfortunately, because we're making cuts, we, we didn't include it. And then just the STEAM and STEM offerings, we want to do the makerspace, you know, we didn't include any kind of, you know, mat- You know, we didn't include any kind of, you know, materials and supplies for that. When we went to New York, they had some very interesting maker spaces that we would love to be able to work with. Some of which we can get from donations and some of those things. But having it to be able to have it be sacked and, you know, have it, have it be well-run is a gap. So I just give you those as, so we never lose sight of the fact that we, you know, we're always trying to look and think forward. But the reality is in this budget, we, we have not been able to address these. They still remain interest, things, interests of ours, however. So then the following set of pages before we actually get into the individual budgets for each area in school. Is, um, the impact on the reductions to the FY seventeen budget. So, um.
Can I, can I just ask a question about the funds for technology devices at the middle high school? What, um, so we don't, we don't have, the students don't have access to personal devices. So thinking about next year with our one-to-one initiative, we have no money in the budget for that?
Correct.
We have no money. And if we, if, like, how much money would it take? I mean, did you, did I hear, I hear of about like fifty thousand dollars? Because remember what, if we, if, and I know this is all hypothetical. But so we had the parents buying the, the devices. We still need to have some devices in the school for students whose parents, who, who just would not be able to get the devices themselves.
That's correct.
Right? And we also need the, the Apple TVs so that we can make good use of these iPads, right? Um, so how, how much would that cost?
Okay, so what I'm gonna suggest, we, we're finding that out. We're meeting with the Apple representatives on the twenty-second, Monday, when we come back from vacation. So we'll have a better sense of that. We did meet today to sort of get a few things organized. But I would sugge- we would make a, a specific presentation to you, um, on, on how we're gonna do it. We just haven't, we don't have the final details.
Right, no, I'm not asking really for the details, I'm just wondering.
I don't know the answer though Pam, I'd be giving you a guess. You know, I'd be giving you a guess, so again.
But it's a significant chunk of money.
It's, it's, it's a significant chunk of money. It's not ten thousand dollars.
Right.
It's not ten thousand dollars. So, you know, we've, we will strategize on, are there different groups who could help us with this? We're looking at, are there grants that could help us with it? Um, App- we're not sure about exactly the deal for Apple and so there's still.
With the budget as is, we can't move forward with it.
If we have to rely on our budget to move forward with it, we wouldn't. That's why we're looking at the different models.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Um.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the impact, what we started with is the things at the top of the budget, of the list. Are the things that we feel have a lower impact on the ultimate budget. Um, the first is moving, you know, part-time nurse to the school choice revolving account. Now, we, we've been talking to you about the unhealthiness of the accounts, right? So the, the only way that this works, well, first of all, they, where they are right now is in the preschool revolving account. They can't remain there. And when we get to the revolving account sections, we'll show you that. They, they can't remain there, but they.
This one is, and this one was in budget.
Oh, sorry, this is the two-day-a-week nurse. Sorry, that's right, sorry, that's my fault. This is the two-day-a-week nurse. So remember, originally in the budget last year, we had put in either a two-day-a-week LPN or clerk, remember? And then we started the year without either. And it was very, very difficult for seven hundred and thirty-three students and one, one nurse at the elementary level. They tend to see the nurse a little more. Um, and, uh, so we were able to, uh, decide that we, we, so we got a two-day-a-week, um, nurse. She was, she was in the budget. So to reduce the budget. We decided that if we took more school choice students in, Peter seems to feel that we'd be able to do that. Then we'd be able to, that account would, would be able to accommodate for this eleven thousand dollar increase. So it, it's, we can't reduce the service. We just think that that's, that's a health and safety issue for children. So we have to figure out a way to, um, to fund it differently.
What are the standards? They have, they must.
Yes, uh, there are.
With a school that size like that?
Well, this is the standard, so, um.
Fifty?
Four hun- so five hundred students for a full-time nurse. And then supposedly for every additional, you add additional point one for every fifty students more. So let's say we have seven hundred students at Pembroke, just to round the numbers, right? So you would, one point four, which is what we have. So we're just slightly under because we have seven hundred and thirty-three students.
Right.
But, um, you know, we're, we're in that ballpark, given the, the help, the extra help. But we wouldn't be, we'd be un- under by a significant amount if that were the case. If we didn't have this two-day-a-week.
And you're also suggesting, um, accepting new choice students.
Mm-hmm.
So what were our numbers last year? Were we turning any away or?
School choice?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we always school, to, turn students away in school choice because we, we, they apply at different grades.
Right.
So they're out there, I mean, they're.
Yes, um, a lot of times we'll get students that are interested in coming from eighth grade to ninth grade. We always have people interested in coming into kindergarten. But we haven't been able to take the last few years because we have sort of this number. And when we get to the number, we.
So you're going to open that number up?
Well, it depends on, um, we, we always look at what we have for current enrollment in our preschool. To see how many of those students are gonna be kindergartner, kindergarteners. And then of course, they have a kindergarten registration process, so we, we find out there as well. But we always wait in, to school choice for kindergarten until August to decide. Because over the summer, people might register. And we're trying to keep those numbers, you know, in, as reasonable as we can in the lower, lower twenties. Twenties are really the number we shoot for, but sometimes we have had slightly larger than that. But we will often have, you know, other grades or siblings of people who are school choice. That now the sibling wants to come and we don't, we don't have spots at most of the elementary grades. We do not have slots and we haven't had slots. And you're gonna see there's two reductions recommended in this budget. And I use the word recommended in, not in the sense of the word. There are, there are two proposed reductions of class, so class sizes in a couple of grades, you know, will go up. Um, so the likelihood of us bringing students in from other towns would not make any sense, right?
So Carol, what you're saying is this, um, like point four school nurse is not going away.
No.
It's just being funded by the school choice account.
Right, that's why I said it's a low impact.
Okay.
Okay, and that's why it's number one. Okay, so number two, um, the, this happens to be just the, one of the benefits administrators and teachers have. Is if they take courses, there's a reimbursement opportunity, um, at a limited number. So based on the fact that there were two administrators that were accessing that money. Knowing the actual number of courses they have to take, we just made sure that the line was reflective of that. So that was actually a reduction of five thousand dollars. Someone, someone finished up their courses a little early, so they didn't, they aren't gonna need the money. Um, so that's again, a low impact. So I, I should say that the first thing we looked at was things that were non-salary. But, you know, didn't, they weren't, they were non-people, they were non-personnel. And then when we started looking at the personnel, we tried to look kind of across categories. So it wasn't all coming out of one particular area. Like we didn't say we're gonna cut four custodians, right? We, we tried to, to look across the board. Um, so the next is the mentor stipend line. Um, this is based on the actual number of teachers we believe we're gonna need mentors for. Of course, that can change, but, um, we, we had many more teachers last year retire. This year, our expectation is one. Um, so we, we looked at that and we said, okay, you know, we'll, we'll take, we anticipate three less. So a thousand dollar stipend each, that's where the three thousand dollars comes from. Um, the district professional development line. Um, every year we expend that line completely. Plus we expend grants from special ed, um, grants. And we expend money from Julie's Title II A. Um, and so, you know, we always have professional development needs. So next year, because we've been doing so many new things, um, and we have the level, um, three status. And we want to give teachers more time to actually work collaboratively. And, and get some internal training as opposed to everything coming from the outside. Um, for this year, and we're recommending the cut for this year. We're anticipating that next year we may need to restore that money depending on what our training plan is. Um, but this year, we, we'd be prepared to take five thousand dollars of, of that. And, um, again, at this point, uh, we don't anticipate that being a high impact. Because our plan for next year is calling for a slightly different model than what we've done in the last several years. Um, the secretary for the, so if you remember, we have a preschool secretary that also works with Julie. They sort of split their time. Um, Julie's, uh, summer schedule is a little different, uh, so she's not, she doesn't work full-time in the summer. Um, and the preschool, of course, you know, doesn't operate in the summer. Although there are, um, registration, people will drop in by for registrations or might have questions about preschool. Um, so what this is, is this is a reduction of the secretary, that the full-time secretary's hours. Uh, so she will work, like I think, a week before and a week after and some, uh, six days or something during the summer. So it won't be, you know, completely eliminated. But, um, she wouldn't work full-time throughout the summer, so that's the sixty-five hundred dollars there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then, you know, now, now we start to get into things that are a little more painful. Um, so we have two library assistants who do a fantastic job, uh, at Pembroke. Um, they assist the students, you know, when they come into the library. But the most important thing they do is they provide a special, so the teachers have prep time. So they provide, they actually teach classes. And, um, Margaret provided that, um, they teach seven grades and basically thirty-five class periods a week. So that is contractual, so, um, that needs to continue. Um, and then one of the, the assistants does go over to the pearly. And provides, uh, library to the preschool students twice a week. And that, again, is the only way that the teachers in the preschool get any preparation time. So we, we don't feel that, that we can take that away. Um, however, so that's why the cut is, um, reducing down to point four from one point oh. So we're reducing point six. So the downside to that, the impact, and that's why I wanted you to see the impact. The impact is that right now, kids get, can have a lot of help. Or teachers can do curriculum consultations with the library and, who can go and pick up books. And put things together for them to help with their curriculum enhancement. That's gonna be more difficult because now the people are really gonna be spending the majority of their time. Um, doing the actual teaching with the kids. So, um, the cut, that's, that's the cut, that's, uh, eight thousand dollars. Um, we also, or lim- are recommending eliminating one point oh middle high school paraprofessional. Now, just so happens that this particular paraprofessional, the student that, um, they work with, uh, is, has left the district. So normally in a case like that, what would happen is this paraprofessional would go back into the program. And work with the, the students that are there and maybe provide some additional inclusion support. Um, but unfortunately, because the budget is what it is, we're recommending elimination of that. And understanding that, you know, you can't always predict, you know, when the high-needs kids are gonna be moving in. Or, you know, so we understand that, you know, losing this position gives us a little less security. That we can have, um, enough support. But it, you know, we, it, we just reduced it because the, the student is no longer here and that was a one-to-one paraprofessional.
So with that particular one, is it the individual that was caring for that child? So it doesn't go by seniority in that case?
Well, I, I, I think the way that contract works is, um, the, the district has latitude in terms of. If, if the person's been here three years, more than twenty hours a week, then they accrue seniority.
Yep.
Um, in other, in other unions, seniority is the first thing that you consider. In this union, seniority is a factor, but the needs of the district are also a factor. So if you have somebody who's been here less time, but has been trained, you know, in some special techniques. And you feel that they are going to be, um, able to provide a service that's a little more, uh, widespread or comprehensive. Then you, you can, um, decide to let the person go that doesn't have the same level of skill. So based, based on whatever factors were considered, um, we're reducing the one paraprofessional. Um, and that happens to be, I believe, at the middle school. Okay, then, um, reducing, and that was twenty thousand sixty-nine dollars. The next is reducing the point five night custodian at the middle high school. So as I explained to you here, currently there are three point five custodians at night and one custodian during the day. So when we look at the industry standards, they're recommending there's five full, should be five full-time custodians at the middle high school. So obviously, we're not meeting that criteria and we're short. So what it means is that the three main, remaining night custodians will have to, Mike will have to rework the scope. And they will exceed the number of square-footed, square feet that are considered to be, um, acceptable or possible, I guess. Uh, at level three industry standards, um, at the middle high school, he'll have to rework that. So obviously, you know, we, we hope it won't happen, but it, it's likely that the cleanliness of the building, you know, may, um, be, be noticeable. And covering overtime shifts, the, the building's used a lot by GAA on the weekends and, and particularly GAA. But other groups and custodians work overtime to cover that. And obviously, if there's fewer people in the pool, you know, it makes it that much more difficult to, to get these guys some time off. And to allow them to cover the shifts. And, you know, I think the community has expectations about, you know, we renovated the buildings or we built new buildings. There's a certain level of expectation, so gonna work hard to, you know, meet that expectation. But I think the, the impact statement here says, you know, anytime you, you take, uh, the work of one and a half people. And, you know, try to distribute it amongst the people that are there, you're gonna have to make some priorities. Some things that would maybe get done every day aren't gonna get done every day. Or some things that might get done every week might not get done every week. Um, and that's a twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. The next is, um, what, point eight FTE, so it's not a point eight person, it's a, a number of people. Um, content teachers for small group instruction at the Georgetown Middle High School. So, um, this, this was something that we had put in place last year, um, at the middle school. To sort of replicate the, what we consider to be a successful strategy that we have at the high school. Which is to provide level three classes, which are general curriculum classes. But they're also in small, in a smaller group. There's fewer students, so they have better chance to get more individualized attention as they're learning the curriculum. We don't have that structure at the middle school. Um, we have enrichment enhancement to, to help provide remediation. And of course, we have special education programs. But this one wasn't necessarily working just exclusively with students who were in special education. Uh, it was an attempt to take some of the content courses and put them in, and make them smaller. Um, as we looked at it and, you know, scrutinized everything, um, based on the number of kids who were actually in the small groups. Um, sometimes there was five students, um, sometimes seven students, obviously students with needs. So to me, that's not a big group. Um, but at the same time, we had two full-time teachers, you know, instructing that small group of students. So we're making difficult choices. We absolutely, you know, like the model and feel that the model's effective. But we're going to, to operate it and these, they're still gonna, kids are still gonna get what's in their plans. If their educational plans or students are still gonna get extra help if that's what they need. But they're not gonna have it with two teachers, they're gonna have it with one. So that's where that, where that cut is. If anybody's any questions about that, I know Peter could probably, and Donna could help with that. But that's forty-five thousand three eighty-nine.
When you say that, the, so I understand that the IEP, the children on IEPs obviously have to be.
Yes.
Followed through. But you have children that are in the general education, uh, classroom that, that do have trouble.
That's right.
So if we're getting rid of that, how can you say that they, we will still continue to?
Because the special education teacher or whoever is avail, it's, some, some of these kids are on IEPs.
Yeah.
So we, we do have, um, we have the enrichment enhancement for, for some of the other students. And we're trying to keep that number low. And that's been the challenge. She, Donna also has small group instruction through her language-based classrooms, which our team taught.
You mean, making the enrichment classroom small?
Well, there, there's.
And the enhancement classroom small, you're saying?
So there's, there's sort of three different levels, right? So there's, there's the enrichment enhancement, which should be small. Uh, fifteen is a little bigger than we like.
Okay.
But sometimes you might have ten to fifteen students in there. Those are kids that need extra help, but maybe aren't, don't have, they don't have specially-designed instruction through their disability. Then we have language-based students who actually need a specially-designed team teaching kind of model. But then there are these other students who, um, in the, in the, in the past would have gotten their instruction. Pretty much from the special education teacher in like a resource room kind of thing. Um, what we were trying to do was to. Um what we were trying to do was to involve the content teacher in that instruction, right? And, and so that's where, we're having to pull that out and we're reducing point twos and point fours of a couple of people.
Yeah, no, I, I understand the, the concept of it, I just don't
They're still gonna get help Barbie, it's just not gonna be with the, the same level with two, two teachers as opposed to one. They'll still have their special education teacher will teach them, they just won't have the math teacher, the content math teacher coming in. Um and again, our, our preferred option is that we, as much as possible, we would like the content teachers to be teaching the content, right, with the support of the special education teacher.
So how many will that impact, how many?
How many, I'm sorry, what do you?
Like the point eight, so it's not
How many people is the point?
Yeah, you mentioned that it was a number, I think it was three.
So three individuals make up the point?
Three part-time, three part-time.
Pieces of people.
I, I believe it was
Peter, the, the point eight uh small group, those were social studies, if I remember, and, and a science.
A math, two social studies, a science.
Okay, so that's four. Okay, the answer is a math, two social studies and one science.
And what, what grade level is this? It's
It's, it's
Social studies was uh high school, hamile school, math was middle school and the science was high school.
Yeah, so it's a combination.
Suzanne, did you wanna ask that question about the hours?
What is the question, what's the question?
What the points will be the same?
Right, how do the, how do the points equate to hours, that's what I'm not understanding.
Well, generally, a point two is one day, all week, or one, one day in one day, one
One period.
One period, one period, right, right.
Doesn't translate into the elementary model.
It's a little different at the middle high school, cause the way their periods
It's not by hour, it's
It's by period.
By periods.
By periods.
So like a, if we, if it was a total point eight and it was just one person, they would teach all but one period in a day, so point two is just one period. So, so Peter might have some high school science teacher who's got um uh four classes of typical science and one small group. Right, so what's gonna happen is it's going to affect, like you said, point twos of four people. We have a couple of people.
So does this affect four periods a day?
Does it affect four periods a day?
You said point two is one period.
But it, so is that like But isn't in the same day, it's di-
Yep.
Yes, so is that considered a full-time position or you're pulling out?
No, it's, it's
Pieces of people.
So in
At the, at the middle high school, we have, it's, it's at a size
Four different people.
Where we don't have full teachers all the time, especially in the middle school where, where uh for the seventh grade, for example, a teacher teaches, a social studies teacher would teach four social studies classes
Right.
and we have six, so I need forty percent of somebody to teach the other two.
Yeah.
But we have, I never uh heard of FTEs till I came to Georgetown, but I'm an expert at them now.
Is that something that can be
It must be a scheduling nightmare.
Oh
It, it's a challenge.
When, when you're sharing, Peter's a master at it, but when you're sharing staff between your middle school and high school, cause you're not, we're sort of, Peter and I have had many conversations, but wouldn't it be lovely if you could have a set middle school staff and a set high school staff? But we're both too small and too big, right, isn't that what you explained to me? We're, we're both, it, it just doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. So did you ask a question Suzanne, did you ask me about, I thought you had a question?
No.
No.
Okay.
But that mu- so I know we've talked about this before too and it must be difficult finding teachers that wanna just do a point three or a point four, right?
It is.
Very.
And then what hap-
So we try, we try to, we try to combine it as best that you can.
To, to add more hours or?
Yeah, and sometimes it's uh, it's an easier fit, like, like um sometimes you can find a math-science person in the middle school that can do both. Uh sometimes you can teach twenty percent out of your area, so sometimes we, we might, you know, sweeten the pot with a candidate by giving them a twenty percent from a, something that they certainly can do but just don't have a license in, so um it, it's, it's tough. It's very hard to find, especially when you, when you get below sixty percent.
Right. And of course, some of the challenges are that sometimes people will take a job because they need the job, but then they don't stay in the job long because they're obviously looking for a full-time employment. Sometimes we're lucky enough, if Peter needs like a point two, one of the teachers will say, well, I'll teach that extra section, so we pay them additional money to pay, to do that extra section, so in other words, they'd be
So then they don't have a prep time?
That's right, so they'd be a one point two FTE in that case.
Do we have a lot of teachers that do that?
We don't have a lot of teachers that do it.
We don't, we try not to do that, um but because it's just too tough on the teacher.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But for example, um that uh point two small group math, that's uh, the bad news is we're losing that money. The good news is it's not a person because it's a high school teacher doing an extra class.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh yeah, gotcha. So that's why that
That's the bright side of it.
That was the, yes, the bright side of it.
How does this relate, looking at the, you were talking about pulling the, the content teachers out essentially? How does this affect a, the, the Pembroke accountability? Some of those kids are theoretically moving into the middle school and we wanna make sure the middle school kids are getting what they need. And one of the, one of the areas that you sort of identified was, was more coordination and collaboration between the content teachers and special ed teachers. If we're pulling those content teachers out, what does that mean for the middle school, which is theoretically where some of those kids are moving into next year?
Do you guys wanna, I, I mean, basically, they're still gonna get their content, they're just not getting it from a content specialist. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so I think the, are you asking the question, would they, cause it's a little different at the elementary than it is at the middle high school, are, is this the sole content, like for example, let's pick a subject. When they get small group math, is that their exclusive math? So they don't go, they don't go into the, to the general curriculum?
Correct.
So that, they'll still get their content?
They're gonna get it from the special ed teachers is the answer. So we went back and forth, what, should we cut the, the
Special ed teacher.
Special ed teacher or the content teacher? And um I think if we cut the special ed teacher, it would really limit us um when we have to make other moves uh because of a, something uh that's added to an IEP or somebody that moves into the district or something like that. And so we have more flexibility by cutting the regular ed teacher.
Sure. I guess I'm wondering, and, and I know there are lots of factors that go into it, the, one of the, one of the areas, the action plan items that you identified was that collaboration and it feels like
Regular and special ed?
Between the regular and special and it, it's happening, it will be happening at Pembroke and it already is, but if we're taking that support away, when they leave Pembroke, are we? I don't wanna say, yeah, are we digging ourselves a hole?
You mean the sup- the support of, of having the, the two teachers working together?
Of, of the content, or but really, I mean, the two teachers, but really also the content, pulling the content specialist out.
Uh you know, I, I, I think, I told you these cuts are painful, right? I, we're, I, we're happy to talk about other cuts, this is why we recommended this is
For sure.
that we weren't eliminating the service, right? It was a, a six, you know, it was a back and forth in terms of, is it the content teacher that you, you keep? Or is it the special ed teacher that you keep? That the kid, the children have to have services, they have to, they have to have the help.
For sure.
It's really, and because we had two full-time people working with the group for five kids, we said, we have to make some difficult decisions here. Um Donna, is there anything else to add to that in terms of, um, you know, I mean, is there a collaboration between the special education teachers and the content teachers? I think that's what you're wor- that's what I, I know we worried about at Pembroke.
Right.
That we had two different groups doing two different things.
Right, and just while the child is being taken out and missing the content that's going on, while he's being ta-
Right, and how are we, how Right.
While that child's being taken out, so I, I agree with you and that is just a concern.
Yeah. It is a concern.
Like how are we to ensure that the kids from Pembroke that are experiencing that, I know it's different elementary to middle school, but they'll be coming up to middle school.
Right, so some of what we're going to have to do is we're sitting down, looking at the schedules and thinking about teacher's schedules and student's schedules, is really work together collaboratively, Peter and myself, um the special ed coordinator, and looking at, how can we try and free up some time or free up some periods that are going to align so that the content area teacher and the teacher teaching that math class, for example, can meet and can have those conversations? Or if the students do have the capacity to go into the um enhancement? That's where the content area teacher, so how can we connect the working of the special ed teacher in the classroom with that enhancement classroom teacher and kinda look at it that way? So sort of shift our current thinking a little bit, not go back to exactly the way it was, but try and do a, you know, force more of that collaborative process in. So it, it will be a little trickier, it's just gonna take more thoughtful planning in doing it.
So if there's fifteen kids as opposed to five, if you have the support of a special education teacher going into the content, going into the math enhancement, then you're lowering the class size in essence down to a
Right, because you have fifteen.
Right, so that's what Donna's saying, we, we just may have to do it in a different setting, but the goal would still be to, to give the, the children content practice in, in the general curriculum.
But so, but we are mindful of that?
We, oh, of course we are, of course we are.
That that's what, because these have to happen.
Lots of conversation already, yep.
Yeah, that, that's what needs to be done.
Absolutely. Agreed, agreed a hundred percent. Um where are we here?
Ten.
Okay, number ten. Um the special education coordinators each have a part-time secretary and they do yeoman's work in terms of uh scheduling appointments with parents and sometimes those appointments have to be changed multiple times, coordinating with prof- outside professionals that might be coming to the meeting or providing reports, all the documentation, getting stuff in and out, you know, in and out with, for parents, it's a huge
Time sensitive.
It is, ti- very time sensitive, cause there are timelines. So again, we were taking a look at each category and, and said, well, you know, what, what, can we do this a little bit different, right? So um what it's gonna mean is that there's going to probably need to be some shifting of some responsibilities. So for example, at the middle school perhaps, um the middle school secretary, because we do feel like we need to have like somebody in the middle school, right? Cause we thought about that position, right? And but, but you need somebody up there, especially, you know, up on the third floor where all the children are. So but perhaps a portion of her time in her day could be used to contact parents, schedule appointments, you know, whatever the, the determination is, that the, the need is. It's gonna have to impact somebody else's responsibilities if we make the reduction.
So how is this impacting that individual in terms of the, the union contract? The change in working conditions, you know, like it, that's all, yeah, like it
Well, it wouldn't be a change really in her working conditions, cause it'd be doing similar work. It's, you know, it's, it's a secretarial work.
Okay, it's just the workload, but the workload would certainly
Well, we'd have to make some allowances on the other end of that, right? So we can't say to her, you're gonna do everything you do now, one hundred percent of that, and now we're gonna give you more. We, we would have to really work with her and try to figure out like just what Julie and, and Margaret are gonna have to do with the, with the other secretary is, you know, we, we're gonna have to figure out what are the highest priorities. This is, there's a lot of mandates with this, so this we have to ensure is, is done, is done right. And what will happen is, I'm not sure exactly, I don't think we've talked about logistics of it yet, but you know, instead of having, you know, someone a hundred percent placed, you know, at one school and the other, at another school, we, you know, we may have to have the person, obviously the person would have, that's gonna be left would have to travel perhaps, or with technology, there's a lot of things you can do and email out. So we don't have all of the logistics la- you know, set up for that, but we do anticipate that it will, one of the impacts will be that it's gonna need to shift some of the responsibilities, some things that she does now won't get done and then some of the responsibilities might go to someone else to, to do them.
A few years ago, the middle school had like volunteers
I know.
come in, which, which is a little odd due to the, you know, confidentiality and things like that. But uh is that something that it would ha- it would end up having to happen? Because you, you know as well as I do, when a parent calls the school, the last thing they wanna do is hear, you know, press this, press that and oh, leave a message because no one's here.
Mm-hmm.
So what do we think about that?
That's why we didn't touch the, that's why we didn't touch the secretary. And that's also why we didn't touch the second Pembroke secretary for seven hundred and seventy students.
But just if she's traveling, like if there was need for her to travel to a different school, then
Yeah, yeah. Yes. Yes, um yeah, I mean, all those things need to be worked out logistically. Um you know, we love having parent volunteers, that's, that's not the issue, but when you're looking at something that's a dedicated amount of time, you know, I mean, things come up, you, you know, they can't always make it. We're talking about the same thing in the library, you know, with a library assistant. We may have to, you know, rely, you know, for the youngest kids on parent volunteers who might be able to come in and, and, and help out with some of the, the extra, you know, helping kids find books and, and that kinda thing, you know.
Shelving the books, checking out the books.
Yeah, yeah, cause there's a lot to it, there, yeah, there's a lot to it.
That's what I used to do. And just the wordings in the
I loved it.
In the notice going out has to be a little more like, you know, once you
Right.
you say that you're gonna do it this day, it's a little more than just volunteering, you want, you know, you want to show up.
But you know, I, I can't, I can't promise you that people might not notice that, you know, things aren't, you know, quite as efficient as they, they are right now. As I said, these cuts are all a little painful and, and impacted. And um number eleven uh is to eliminate the in-school suspension position at GMHS. You know, we've talked to you about the new suspension laws and, you know, there's re- new restraint laws. We worked on them in governance, um that took over Ju- uh January first, I think. Um the in-school suspension monitor position has been um in place for a long time and uh it, it works within the structure of the discipline system. So instead of suspending students externally, which we, we want to do, you know, to the, unless they're a danger to themselves and others, we wanna, we wanna reduce or restrict the number of suspensions that are out of district. We prefer to have them, you know, in, in school and where we know they're there and perhaps we can give them an opportunity to make better choices. Um but the person, uh eliminating the person means that, that uh someone, if there is an in-school suspension, um someone's going to have to, you know, be there to supervise them. And it probably will fall to, you know, an assistant principal or perhaps the principal um on occasion. Um but because right now there isn't a provision like in the teacher's contract for teachers to, to do that as a duty, so it would probably be an administrative task. Um and as you know, the administrat- everything has a, every action is a reaction, right? So the administrators have a very busy load with all of the teacher evaluations and that process has added more time, it's a good process, but it's added more time. All of the sort of general, you know, things that they have to do just as part of their administrative function, including lunch duty and a few other things. Um it just means that, you know, that there's gonna be a challenge trying to figure out how that all can, can happen uh without somebody that you can sort of count on to um keep the kids safe, make sure the time is as productive as you can make it. And um we wanna continue to, to not be um increasing the use of out-of-school suspension because we don't have enough resources.
So just, just for data purposes, how often does that happen?
Well, uh Peter, you're gonna have to help us with that, I
I see that one.
Or, or just what, what's the full-time equivalent of this cut?
It's a one point, it's a one, okay.
One point oh.
But how often?
But he also, he also is the detention monitor after school.
And he also covers substitutions too, right, if you need
Yes, he does.
Yeah, which is big.
That's, that's, this position came about my first year here, uh we used to have Saturday detention. And
Like the breakfast club.
Yeah, it was a, it was a horror show, mostly because the, the time between the infraction and when the discipline was dished out, was sometimes two weeks.
Yeah.
So um
The kids forget why they're there.
We created this position with uh money from the sub-account and some other new budget money because um we don't have kids in suspension every day, so this person subs when they're not in suspension. So um to answer your question, um it's really hard to say because they're discipline isn't a consistent thing, so sometimes we have, you know, when the moon's in the wrong place, you get a lot of things going on and sometimes nothing. So I would say maybe two kids a week, three?
Very good.
But do we, and we always have a need for subsidies or services?
Always.
So he's always being used.
Every day.
He's like a permanent substitute.
So we'll have to get somebody else, take it out of the work.
Yeah, and some, sometimes like this gives us the flexibility of, you know, putting a kid in rather than suspend them for a whole day, if they do something like late morning or something, we'll put them in there for the rest of the day and they get the point and um be- because he'd be Um be- because he'd be subbing, then we we pull him into the, you know, in-school suspension room and then. Find a different way to cover those classes and that's gonna take that flexibility away. It's gonna be a big blow.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Yeah, I do agree with that.
Twenty-one thousand five ninety-three is the amount that.
Yeah, so the bu- the budgetary impact like isn't huge, but it is gonna be a very big blow because. Like the superintendent said, it's gonna fall on the administrators that already have things going on and. And then the substitutions, like Pam said too, you're still gonna need subs, so that line's gonna go up.
And then when she goes down the list, you're reducing the administrator by point five too, so it compounds it even more.
Okay, so the next one is eliminate uh one point six FTE, middle school content teachers. So I think as Peter explained just briefly before is that you. Teachers teach a certain, teach four classes and they, there's a core team of teachers at each grade level. But because there are, to keep the class sizes smaller, there are always more sections than four. There are teachers who teach what we call off the team. And those are people, as Peter said, that, you know, may be high school teachers or may teach a different subject, but they they teach a point two. Um, in a particular grade, so the the um. The plan is uh to reduce the number of sections, the number of groups of kids. Um, from six to five, and when you do that, the class size will increase to twenty-three and twenty-four. What what's sort of that number doesn't tell you is because we are committed to having the small group language-based class. At each grade, the number of kids that you, the number of sections that you are distributing is now takes that. Small, one of those is smaller, so it's not twenty-four, so that means that the other kids need to be redistributed. To the other, to the other teachers in that grade level, and that's where we get concerned because that number um.
Will be in the high twenties.
Will be in the high twenties.
And math grouping plays a role in that too.
Right, because.
So it's not like in an elementary school where you have a hundred kids and you divide by five. So you have X amount of kids in certain levels of math, um especially when you get to the. For the lower levels where they're smaller, um so you don't have an even distribution of of kids.
So that that cut uh is ninety thousand five dollars. Then we go to um. Another painful cut, the middle high school technology support personnel position. So this position um is a one point oh, and I described, you know, some of his details in here, but he's really responsible, he's sort of the guy that's the go-to guy. Something's not working right with your computer, or you know, you have a question about your printer, or you know, there's a network question, you know, he's sort of the go-to guy. Does help troubleshoot with teachers and um and does provide technical assistance, as I said. So um, as I said, it was a full-time position, this is reducing it by point six. Um, which is now basically, um, they would work two, you know, um, four hours a day. No, two uh, two hours a day, half the day, less than half the day. It, this is the, you know, the the argument here is it's gonna be very, very difficult to keep somebody to be interested in that unless they're partnering it with some other job and then. Their availability is not, it's kind of like, uh, you can't guarantee when a technology issue is going to come up, it might not be when he's there. So there are a few other things that we're putting in place, like Wes has a um. A little group of students that's learning how to be technically, you know, assist test, do technical assistance. Certainly not a substitution for this position by any means. Um, it probably will mean that Wes will have to, as the technology director, spend some time physically at the high school. You know, doing some of this work, and it would probably mean that Peter, who's been our sort of technology uh go-to guy. Um, you know, may be pressed into service uh occasionally to um to help with that. We also do have Paul Schwaim, who is the librarian, who's been working with us, trying to help with um. Gonna be tru- helping with some of our data reports and he's working with our website and um, you know, he's a knowledgeable guy as well, so you know. He might be able to provide some, but it it really isn't the same as having a designated person, you know, who's there. And then, of course, we're talking about the one-to-one, and uh one of the things we are concerned about is as. You know, questions come up and teachers have concerns or, you know, wonder about certain things, you know. There won't be somebody that's one, one point oh designated there, so as I, as I sh- show you as we get on like the cut list. Things have a a greater impact in many ways, they're all, they all have an impact, but they get greater.
Now, can you, can I just ask, um, in terms of health benefits, wh- when do we offer, when are our employees eligible to get them in terms of?
Five.
At point five, okay, so.
That's right, so I I'm not sure if this, right, it it could potentially.
Our, but also.
Yes, it could, and that's a thirty-two thousand one forty-eight. Um, as Peter talked about, the next one um is a a. Taking one of the assistant principals at the middle high school and giving them the responsibility of the athletic director. As well as the princ- as the assistant principal, it does require that they would reduce their administrative time. Um, that they will work on things they're working on right now, which is the instructional leadership, the discipline, the day-to-day operations, the evaluation supervision. Walk-throughs, all of those things. Um, and they would have to absorb the responsibilities of the athletic director, which includes during the day, scheduling games. You know, um, there's a lot of, you know, dealing with coaches, you know, answering, you know, questions from parents, you know.
Now, this has been done in the past.
Yes, it has, um, years ago, there was a man named Al Hadad who did it, um, and then um. Peter, what what is the history of this, so then Al did it and then.
Al did it and um.
Did he, did he retire?
Yeah, Al Al retired the year I came, the year before I came.
Okay.
And um, we decided that that's not a great model. Because it doesn't give justice to either thing, either position. And uh we created an a, an athletic director and an assistant principal. And then um, last time, I'm trying to think how many years back, when we were in budget trouble again. We um combined the two and Guy Prescott was the athletic director. And we made him the dean of students.
That's right.
I think we did this when we created a principal in the middle school.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And um, so uh, you know, nearly killed him and uh, yeah, we are, we're back to that again.
We're really gonna kill him this time, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah, we'll finish him off.
Guy has since, if you were thinking his. Um, so um, wh- what happens in this case is the current athletic director is a. Uh part-time teacher and then the AD. So he would go back into the classroom full-time, which would then bump at least, thank you, at least a less senior teacher. In the history department. And then there's a stipend for the athletic director in the athletic revolving account, so. That revolving, it will still be charged, that money will still come out of the athletic revolving account, but it will be used to offset the salary. Of the assistant principal slash athletic director. Okay, so that's how, that's how you get the money, somebody, no one really loses their job. But the job responsibilities um change, and what we know about the AD's job. And I mean, Christopher Franco's been someone who's put in an important amount of time, you know, sometimes you set your, the set, you set the standard high, Chris is the, you know, most everything. Um, you know, one of the impacts will be, is it reasonable to expect Guy to come in at six in the morning and then, you know, be there till nine o'clock at night? Every time there's a game, I think that that's probably unreasonable. But these two jobs are two kind of distinct, we we don't need a full-time athletic director here for, by any means. But at the same time, you know, it's really not a fifty-fifty split when you have responsibilities. Like of the magnitude of an administrator and then of the magnitude of just the um dealing with the public and the people. Um, you know, it it, we're we're concerned about it, but. You know, we had to make a decision here and that's what we decided, we do feel that we still need some support at the middle school because. Parents have had more security knowing that there's someone that works, you know, is gonna dug de- devote time, it's probably gonna be Guy. That's going to be the AD slash um assistant principal. And then um Heidi Manjo will s- will now, instead of just being devoted to the middle school, she's gonna have to pick up some high school responsibilities as well. There's just no other way to do it.
But you also said with um the AD going back into teaching, he's gonna bump another teacher.
That's correct.
Right, that's what I was just saying.
So there is somebody.
So that point four is is the sa- that's where some of the savings is coming from.
From the teacher that was.
There is a lot, someone's, all of these things are translating into one point two social studies teachers.
Yes, because there's pieces of the different social studies, yeah, it, yeah. Right, of of actual bodies, because, cuz let's just use, for example, you might have a social studies teacher, let's just use somebody, Chris bumps back in. So now there needs to be, so now there there needs to be point four, right, Peter?
Yeah, so somebody who's full-time just went down to sixty percent.
Right, and then let's say that person was also somebody who did a small group, so now they just bumped down further, so.
Do we know if that's, we do know that it has impacted somebody in that.
Right, we do know.
But in that circumstance, that they've also.
Yep, yep, and as Peter's saying.
Totaled, totaled one, one whole person.
And then a part of a person.
Okay, so one and a half. And and that is a thirty-seven one four four, it's heartbreaking.
It really is.
So then you get to the next cut, and these these um, these two here, um. So Margaret's looked at her class size numbers, um, there are some classes that the numbers are already, you know, high. Um, so those grade levels right now, you know, weren't considered, it's fifth and sixth were were the ones that come to my mind, right, Margaret?
Third grade would have been high.
The third grade would have been high, so. You know, we we obviously need to sort of watch the enrollment because one of the things that we write about in here that Margaret pointed out. Is that every year, there are people who move in in the summer and there are people who move out in the summer and there are people who. Come in during the school year, there's there's movement in and out, so it is very difficult to sort of predict where those. And final enrollment numbers will lie, will will, you know, will, but um. At this point, um, these are the grades that we're anticipating, um, obviously for different reasons, you know. Any elementary um cut is tough.
Yeah.
Uh, because the teacher teaches every subject and, you know, obviously, we we have our level three eligibility status, so. You know, obviously, um, class sizes are, you know, are, we we pay attention to that. Uh, these two grades were were picked primarily because when you reduce from five to four, the class size is twenty-four. Um, so obviously, if there were five, that, you know, the number was smaller initially, although not to the point where we say. Oh, wow, that's really way too small, like what, it's it's not a, it's not clear-cut by any means, w- it would be optimal at some grades to have a few. Kids in, having the opportunity to be in smaller classes, but twenty, we sort of said that the the range we would shoot for is K to three. We really were trying to be under twenty-two and and then, you know, the others were under twenty-five. And then we get to the high school, you know, we could have some classes that were twenty-five to twenty-eight, but because of the way high school schedules work, you might have six in. One class and you might have twenty-five in another class, um, so that's a little harder to predict, but not at elementary, you just sort of know who your kids are. Um, the other thing is, you know, again, it's. We've lived through this before and Cheryl can, and probably Suzanne can speak to it too, you know, we had seven of each grade and then. Six of other grades and five of other grades, so you always have this sort of instability. So if you reduce one section, let's say in second grade, the following year, you gotta look at something in third grade because. You you might need to restore in the second grade teacher because the first grade number is such that it's gonna come up, so it it ends up being this. It's volatile, it's a little, it's a little tricky.
And just speaking to the, having four classes, the Pembroke has not had four.
Yeah.
Classes at a grade level since before nineteen ninety-five.
Right, right, that's true.
Which is.
You know, Georgetown's growing, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so again, things could change, right, there's a new development that's going in, you know, there may be new, there may be new students from that, I mean, they're talking about. You know, uh places in Georgetown being, you know, building out eventually, that's why we built five of each grade and actually. I was worried that that wasn't gonna be big enough, right, cuz the enrollment would speak to five, five of each grade fits now. But if you start adding more developments or or other things, you, it's gonna, it's gonna go the other direction, but for some reason. Um, and you're, and you now you've built this brin- beautiful brain of school and you're gonna have empty classrooms because, you know.
Is there a thought, I mean, obviously not optimal, is there a thought as to what, is there an opportunity to use that classroom for something? Good, or are we just gonna close the door and turn off the lights?
I I'm sure that we could have conversation about that, you know, um, we haven't gotten that far, honestly, but um.
Not that that hasn't happened before, I mean, I've gone into these beautiful new schools in this area and the library shut down because.
Yeah.
You know, they can't afford a library, and so it is.
Part is, I don't think any of us were really anticipating this, so, I mean, we knew, we knew the the budget was getting tighter, but I. I think maybe we all sort of hoped that we weren't gonna start kind of going down this. Spiral again, um, because as we've been talking about in budget and finance and we've been working with the town depart- department uh decision-makers. Is, you know, so last year, it was some, this year it's more, and it's it's cutting programs and services. And what happens next year, because if next year, we end up having to go to level services or just above. We're gonna be cutting another five hundred thousand dollars, and you can see how painful these cuts are, and honestly, as I said in my letter, we. We don't support any of these personnel cuts, they they're, we make them, and as I said to the teachers in the email I sent out to them, it is with a very heavy heart, we even. Discuss personnel, because we believe we need all of these people. Um, there's nobody here that's a luxury to have, these are all core, core people, um, and this just gets us to two percent. So if we get the word that we have to go down to level, we need to cut another two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. We're, that'll be a, that'll be a struggle, that'll be a, that'll be a struggle.
Well, as I, as I uh was looking through this binder, I sent the superintendent an email and I said, cuz this isn't new to Michael or I, but. But when I read it on paper, I said, wow, this is so real, like the meetings we've had.
Pretty in writing, it's not pretty in print, I think you're saying.
To look at it, it's very, um, it's sad.
Well, I know the time that is in the thought that's gone into all of this. Um, and I, like, based on the fourth grade and second grade, I know the numbers, I think. We're looking at ninety-three in each of those grades, which just makes sense if you're gonna cut, but I am concerned about. The second grade going up to twenty-four.
Yeah, we are too. Share that concern.
Yeah, that's a young age.
Share that concern. Having been a, an elementary teacher for many, many years, you know, sometimes class size isn't everything, because sometimes it's the nature of the class. But anytime you start adding after twenty-two, you know, it just means that you just, you know, especially with the demands today of reading and writing and. And you're differentiating instruction and, you know, if there's not an aide in any of the classrooms, and of course, we're not recommending adding any aides. So, um, and then, of course, we we have interventionists, but they're limited, so, you know, it just. It does end up being um very tricky and and I, again, I I believe that the town hears that and believes us. Uh, you know, but, you know, they they're gonna give us a number and we're gonna try to wo- work with it, but. I think that, you know, we're, we think the minimum that we could request, and this is really the minimum, is a two percent increase. And and even that is not maintaining close to what we currently have now.
Are you saying this is two point oh three?
This is two point oh three, I'm saying, I'm saying, that that we can't go lower, in my, in my opinion. Um, without really getting into a a very serious position. This is tough, right, and and again, I'm looking at next year thinking if nothing changes in the town. If the state doesn't come up with more money, which it's not likely to do, it, to the extent of what we're talking about here, and there's. The, you know, the taxpayers only have a capacity to do so much, unless there's new revenue somehow. Unless there's new revenue somehow generated. I, I think we're, you know, I mean, I was optimistic that last night and follow through today was we, we're throwing out some strategies about maybe having some long-term, you know, su- support and help, you know, on budgeting, you know, as a town, you know. Maybe that will, will yield some, something if it, if it is a follow through, if it's followed through. But I don't think we can continue to do what we're doing. You know, so just going through quickly, um, the budget calendar, I, obviously in tab B. Tab C, you see this all the time, but when we make the cuts, we do look at this. We go back and say, what, what is it we're trying to do every single day? When we talk about educating students to their fullest potential. Right, that, that means we have to be able to provide a full range of programs, comprehensive high school. Um, because one of the things that we know is we're trying to prepare our children for jobs that they're, they probably don't even know exist yet. Um, and you know, everybody has their special needs and we need to work with everybody, top kids and, and students who need extra help. So then we go into the budget proposal. Um, so this is what we talked about last night with FinCom. They always ask us sort of for these general categories. So.
They're on, you put that in the beginning of your page of your thing. They're on budget overview.
Okay, sorry.
That was the end of that.
I gave Jim Lacy my copy last night, so I put it in the binder. I put it in the wrong place. Budget overview. So, obviously you know, we got your input, uh, early on in the process, asked you what were your sort of budget priorities, what, what did you care about?
I think class size was top fraud.
We heard you.
Big priority.
So then we, we had to make some basic assumptions when we put together the, um, you know, th- this budget. Uh, it clearly is not a level services budget, as you know. Um, that we had to take, first priority was to make sure we had negotiated contracts. Joan gives you some information here in terms of the actual breakdown of how the salaries work in terms of the percentage. There was a two percent increase for the teachers. And then, um, the interesting thing is because we have got a lot of wonderful new teachers that are not at the top of the pay scale, um, they, they have a step in scale that gets built in. So that step in scale is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which is pretty much two percent, right? So it's, um, you know, it's just the, the nature of doing the business. You know, we have a lot of wonderful teachers. And I think when we get to the tab on, uh, teacher salaries, the, the, the back of the book, one of the things that, you know, uh, sometimes in the public they wanna talk about is, you know, the teacher salaries. And I think sometimes it's important to compare apples to apples. And so in your book, what, what Joan and I did is we looked at the communities that Georgetown is compared to by the state. So what they do is they look at, uh, similar numbers of students. They look at, um, property values, they look at median income, they get tax rate, per pupil expenditures. And so there's a little graph in there we'll talk about when we get there. And the other thing is on your table, Joan put together for me, um, so one is a comparison to the state, similar communities. The other is, if we lose teachers in the, we lose them in the area, right? Unless they live far away and they're trying to get closer to home. So what Joan was able to do by going into the D E S E website, I think, or, yeah.
You can't put this like where the, where the, they can show this to the public.
People, you know what?
It is very interesting.
People can go to our website and Michael posted the whole budget document tonight, so if people are interested in perusing it, they'll be able to see this. But you, is, what we did is we took.
Gave up last night.
No, is that?
Was in it, yeah.
It was in it, yeah.
So it's what, so it's what the communities all around the North Shore that are surrounding us. And then basically the F Y fourteen average teacher salaries. And as you can see, where we fall. Right? So when people say the teachers, you know, are getting too much money or it's bust, the teacher salaries are busting the budget is, it's not true. And when we compare our teachers who work really, really hard and do a really nice job to people who do the similar work that they do, both in the area and in the state, you can see that they're not at the top by any means. In fact, they're, they're the lowest on both charts. So I, I wanna offer some context to that. So it breaks down that two hundred and twelve is the step in scale. And then there's the longevity bonus, which is, uh, seven, totals about seventy four thousand dollars. There, there's an increase, two point five contractual increase for the custodian and food services. And then we're negotiating right now with a pair of professionals and then and tutors and administrators always, uh, have their raises negotiated every year. They don't have a guaranteed, um, percentages. So, um, next assumption is that, um, some of our people are funded through grants. So when I say to people, okay, we have a four, if we get a fourteen million dollar budget, we have a fourteen million dollar district budget, but we actually run a fifteen to sixteen million dollar operation because we have grants and revolving accounts, um, that many of our, uh, positions are on, which is why when we get to revolving counts, we can talk about how that puts a struggle, puts a torque on those when we put the salaries on because our budget just can't absorb them and they're needed. Um, so basically, you know, we try to use the grants and the revolving accounts in as wise a way as we can, but, but we, we really have to pay attention to that long term because, as I said, we had to take things off the preschool account this year because we could, it couldn't be, it couldn't sustain it. Um, special ed, uh, so special ed tuitions and transportation's budgeted. We didn't have a four percent increase. The reality is, and Donna can tell you, the reality is that it's rare that there's a four percent increase, but we felt we had to put something in there. Um, the state sometimes will approve, um, the, the individual, uh, schools will go to the state and then, and say, we, we have incurred expenses, new expenses, we need to have a higher tuition rate. And they'll entertain it if it makes sense. And, and we've had notices in the past where we're gonna get twenty five percent increases, thirty two percent increases. So we haven't budgeted for those, but we do, for the sake of the discussion, have, we do budget a four percent increase. And we only budget for existing students. And it was interesting, the FinCom people understood last night that that is not sustainable. What happens in many districts is you'll put in an extra tuition or an extra transportation just in case. But when we do that, that means that we cut, we have to cut deeper in order to hold money that we might not need. So what we have been doing is we've been using the circuit breaker reimbursement. Um, or we have not, we have not frozen the budget necessarily, but we haven't spent out of some of the lines that the principals have identified things that need to be done. And in one year, we went to the town. And they gave us two hundred fifty thousand dollars extra because we had an overage we couldn't anticipate. So we did talk about that with the finance advisory board last night, that we hope that won't be necessary, but if it were to be necessary, we might have to come back and talk to them about, about that. Um, but we only budget existing students. Um, most of the salary lines, non-salary lines, I'm sorry, are level funded. The only difference was the technology budget and that was really specifically, obviously we had to take a lease out of choice, a small lease out of choice, but mostly to complete the wireless, uh, infrastructure at the middle high school. Especially if we're looking at a one to one, because you're gonna have a lot more, uh, use of devices and the teachers have devices that they're using now, so we absolutely have to finish that. Some of the, some of the building project money did part of the building, but not all. And Wes has got some, um, uh, E rate, E rate, which is a reimbursement. He was able to get some money to, to work on this as well, but.
But the building project is still looking at that, at the wish lists.
Uh, for, for, um, special education rooms. There, there's nothing in there for the infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, in terms of school choice revenue, um, well, we told you, we, we need to increase ten students and Peter's thinking we might have to increase twelve. If we are, uh, part of what we were trying to work on is the, as Pam was alluding to earlier, uh, the idea that there may be some students for whom we need to provide a device, even if it's just to use during the school day. And so one of the thoughts was that we might take two additional students and then devote that piece of school choice uh, to, to that cost. But we haven't decided on that. So right now we're saying, in order to make this budget work, we need ten. Um, uh, no increases for fees or athletics, however, in the past several years, we just want you to know that the, the fees have not covered the athletic costs. But we didn't, we didn't add more money in the budget to rectify that. We we're just hoping we can continue to increase the number of athletes and cut costs where we can. Um, but we haven't recommended an increase in user fees, although certainly that's something we could consider. Um, preschool revolving account, we told you, we took the part-time secretary and the halftime nurse out. And then, um, the, the district, uh, current transportation contract included, uh, one per, one point seven percent over this year. Um, the state mandates a certain number. We haven't, we haven't gone any further with this, but again, because we don't wanna tax families, you know, to a greater extent, but, you know, we aren't required. Uh, one of the things we did talk about is, is there, what should be charge a fee for bus transportation, seven through twelve. It hasn't come forward because we don't like the idea. But it, we're just throwing it out there that that's something that, you know, we could continue to talk about, should that.
What year are we in the contract with the buses?
Currently in the first year.
First year of, uh, three.
So if we chose to do that, then we still have an obligation to the bus company, which is hence the reason why we'd have to pass it on to the parents.
Right, exactly. And, you know, the bus company is obviously recommending we have a six bus. Our, our elementary buses are at capacity because we're, we're, we're trying to work in the budget, uh, the, uh, committee. Are we trying to work on this? We're trying to do this in.
Governance.
Governance. Um, and, you know, obviously we're trying to figure out, is there a way to accommodate some folks that live within that mile and a half that would be maybe protect, potentially be willing to pay for it. And, you know, the bus company's telling me that we may have twelve slots. So I'm, I'm not, we're gonna have to talk about whether or not that's, or, or go back to double bus runs, which is gonna increase our costs for our supervision.
Have we looked at the surrounding communities that do, uh, not provide buses to their seven to twelve?
I, I don't know, I don't know that there are any. Are you mean for free?
Or that just don't, you know, no, that just don't offer transportation.
Do a little research on that. I'm not aware of any that do that for me. I, I'm, I'm not aware of it.
Pretty sure that we are.
Most of them charge fees.
Yeah.
For the kids that are.
Over that state limit.
So like, for example, Beverly charges.
Three hundred and sixty dollars a year.
A year?
Per child.
Per child. So if you're a family of three, it, it do.
I think there's a cap. There's a cap.
And Beverly owns their buses, correct?
Well, so they're charged even if they're in the K to six?
You can't charge.
You can't charge.
So, but if you're over a mile and a half, if you're under, no.
Two, it's two.
If you're between a mile and a half and two, in Beverly, you pay.
Right, okay. Because two is the state law.
Right.
Again, you know, if the cuts, you know, or you, at some point get too deep, you know, it, it may be a, a factor.
So K to six, closer than two miles could pay.
Correct.
Yes.
Could pay.
Yeah, but you're obligated to get K to six.
That's two miles.
Although our. And we were discussing one, right? So, you know, it just, it does make it difficult.
It, it depends on the community. It depends on, if you have neighborhood schools, it depends if you have sidewalks, I mean.
Right.
Right. You're more rural and you don't really have sidewalks and.
Right.
Right. Sidewalks, one point seven five miles to school.
Oh, sure.
For a first grader.
Oh, it's a long time, yeah.
Definitely.
So the next is, um, just a, a graphic, uh, that shows you, you know, how all of these, um, the F Y seventeen budget is distributed.
Yep.
Um, any questions about that? And then, okay, now, am I supposed to do the summary now?
No, summary's last.
Sorry.
Does it, does that, this page and then the, alright.
So I think, okay, so maybe what, maybe what we'll do now, Joan, if you want, is why don't we have you sort of walk the committee through the highlights on the pages and Ann Wilton, if you have questions.
This is just, most of our documents, especially like the summary page is divided up by school. This, this pulls it more in by department and it, it aligns to the gr- to the pie chart.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just looking at it in a different way. Um, budget summary goes back, on the next page, goes back to F Y fourteen, goes through two years of actuals. This current year is revised and then our proposed. And then you can see the difference in the percentages. Um, so overall, it goes up two point oh three percent. Um, the reason we break out special ed tuition, transportation separately is the town asked us to do that a couple of years ago, so we just break that out separately. Um, I don't know if you have any questions or anything on those pages.
Um, I, I just do have a question about, on the first page, professional development. It says six thousand in F Y sixteen and six thousand in F Y seventeen. And I thought we were gonna cut that by thousand.
Are you wondering?
Instructional support.
Instructional support, okay.
Professional development.
Development, six thousand.
We gonna cut that by five thousand?
Instructional support is, is probably not.
Professional development.
It, it's probably not the professional development is, in your mind?
Okay, it refers to something different.
Well, it says support, so I'm not really, I would have to tie back in. I could get you exactly what that ties into for the six thousand dollars. Because Julie's budget is more than six thousand dollars. So her budget is divided up differently in here.
Okay.
So, I mean, I could certainly send you the link that, how I, where those numbers tie into.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So this is a, a portion of it.
Right. Because some of her.
Stay the same.
Right.
Okay.
You'll probably see her cut in the curriculum development. Can you see the fifty six, right above it, Pam, fifty six to forty six?
Oh, yes.
That's probably where her cut showed up.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, professional development under instructional support, I'd have to go back and see exactly what cell that pulls from.
Okay.
And so part, part of what Joan does on this is she links it to what she has to then report also in the end of the year report. So a lot of these categories tie right into both munis and how the state requires us to report our spending in various lines. So, so would you wanna, do you have questions about that or would you wanna go to Pearly quickly?
I'm good for going to Pearly. Do you have a question?
Do you have other ones, Pam?
No.
Okay, alright.
So, oh, actually, I'm sorry, the, um, employee benefits, where it says, um, what is completely included in that?
Where are we now? Employee benefits.
Yeah, for three B match, salary adjustment uniforms, I'm just not.
Um, so if you go to.
Quite a, quite a combination of things in there, isn't it?
Um, well, you know what, we'll get to employee benefits, but what happens is when we're negotiating a contract, we put the percentage, we put a percentage aside for the negotiations. It goes into the salary adjustment column as well as, um, a percentage raise for, uh, people on individual contracts. It's all driven into a place, a placeholder. When you go through revised, that number, so for last year for the teachers, I'm just gonna pull out any number, say we had a hundred thousand dollars. So we negotiated the, the salaries, so when we do the revised budget, you sign all those transfers, you approve all those transfers, I have to take that hundred thousand dollars and spread it out through all the salary accounts. So you re- you're, you're comparing revised.
Okay.
If you went back and looked at last year's, it, it, the budget amount was much higher.
Yes.
So, so it's just because we zero out that salary adjustment account.
Okay.
And, uh, you could probably see it when we look at the, this year's budget, the quarterly update. You can look at that line and you can see that it's been zeroed out now. So it's, it's because you're comparing budget to revised.
Okay. Pearly.
Tab E.
Um, the only changes in Pearly, um, besides just percentage increases for, um, raises is pulling out a piece of the part-time preschool secretary. Um, we, we reduced her to school gear. She's split between, uh, Julie's, uh, accounts and now she'll be charged to Pearly. And if you look at the nurse's salary line, it's dou- it's more than doubled because it was an increase and we put her totally in the budget. She was halftime in the, um, in the preschool revolving account. Other than that, it's level funded, except for raises. I don't know if you have any questions about Pearly. Pearly, not too much.
That was pretty easy. So going to tab F, Penbrook.
So at the top, you'll see that we have the, um, enrollments. You'll see that we decreased the, um, second grade and the fourth grade. You'll see the numbers, how they spread out. Well, it says twenty three point two five children per class, but it's twenty four. Um, again, we level funded everything in, in this budget um, except for raises. I don't think there were as much changes, many changes to, um, any of the lines. Uh, what I did note.
Uh what I did note that I wanted to bring to your attention is, is we were talking about the library cut. It looks like library increased, that if you look at the library salary line, but a portion of the person that was um in the library was also charged to um this year anyway, was charged to multiple accounts because she did a, when she first, when the year first started, she did a lot, and Margaret can connect, correct me, but she did a lot of other duties. She ended up full-time in the library, I didn't realize that.
Oh, like transportation.
She did a little bit of transportation, a little bit of lunch, a little bit of this, so if you look, you know, I've had to, I've cut those. I had to make the cuts where she was currently.
The appropriate line now.
I'll fix that when when the budget rolls over and we start the new budget in September, but um I looked at it when you were talking about the library cut and I'm saying, wow, it increased, so how did that happen, but if you look down, you can see the decreases in the other accounts. Um I don't think there's much to say about, uh I will note that kindergarten, the kindergarten aids are funded with the current kindergarten grant that we received this year, Margaret was told that the kindergarten grant was appro- you know, that was gonna be funded. But they're talking about making changes to what you can do with the money. So that would be another area that we'd have problems with if they said you couldn't fund paraprofessionals out of there, and I I don't know if you heard any more.
If they say that, because that's what most people.
You're looking at oh three two oh two, right?
Uh yes.
Yeah, okay. It's it's really what you can use them for, but we're within the scope of like.
So as long as they, as long as the legislature doesn't cut that funding, we'll be fine.
Remember last year that they got a lot of backlash on that, they ended up having to reinstate that money.
Yeah, when they.
They were saying that when they revised the chapter seventy formula, they were gonna count for that, they were gonna give you more per pupil, but I noticed it's not on the chopping block this year again, so.
It was level funded.
And it was level funded, so.
Um there's nothing too significant here, you'll see a reduction in the nurse's salary line, that's when we moved the part-time nurse over to um over to the revolving account or school choice. And um you'll you you'll notice the reduction is only about eight thousand, but she started late in the year. So her, the revised budget for this year was less than the cut, and we figured for the full year cut next year. And.
Tab G, middle school.
Well, any reduction, the reductions you see will be all those point twos and point fours of Peters uh teachers. Um I don't think there were any other changes, to be honest with you.
Does it occur, do you mean that the zeros just stand out to me, like on every one of these charts, you know, the zero percent change?
So, and again, at the high school, um it's just, you know, we didn't in- we didn't increase anything. Um except salaries and the cuts are reflected.
Okay, so that math teacher salary, that's the point, that's the. That was middle school.
Middle, no, there is math, there was a math cut.
Was it a point two?
Math teachers.
Is.
Oh, I might have put it in the notes.
Yeah, let's see, oh, five oh two one, math.
Four.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the the point eight that we talked about.
Yeah. So, um.
Then there's the joint account.
Right, so, um.
Is is the, hold on, I'm gonna five oh two three. Um would that be where it says social studies, is that the 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 bump? When Mr. DeFranck. I'm at high school, oh five oh two three.
Okay.
It's probably a little bit more than that.
Yeah, it says that.
Right, it's a little bit more than that.
Teachers for full-time and two part-time, FTE, okay.
Because he had pieces of teachers at both schools, for both cuts.
Yes.
We went through person by person.
We had to go through person by person for Joan to.
Um I will say one thing, you'll you'll see it, uh I didn't mention it at um at Pembroke. But I I noticed it here, I moved the special ed coordinators from the middle, if you're on the middle high school page. You'll see sped teachers revise zero, propose zero. This year, because of the way I have to report, I took the two sped coordinators and moved them out of the school budgets and put them into Donna's budget, so you'll see the special ed budget go way up in salaries in Donna's line.
Yeah, you will see that.
So, so it's because of the way I have to report them, I don't know why they were always reported as teachers because they're not. You know, they're coordinators, so I did move them this year.
Well, special ed, well, tha- that's because of a change in job description, so years ago, not that long, many years ago, the special ed um facilitators were in the teachers' union, they were teachers, they were in the teachers' union. And then um several years ago, we worked with the union and said they really need to be doing evaluations as well and it's difficult to be doing evaluations and supervision if for people that are your peers in your department, you know. Um so even the department heads, they do some supervision and evaluation, but ultimately, it's the administrator in the school that makes the personnel decisions. So this this actually um creates a situation where they are doing more administrative work. So they are not in the teacher's contract anymore. So so that's that's the check, that's the um history there. That's why they were in the teacher's lines.
You'll see um the building uh administrated professional salary, that's the A AP cut. The re- it's the reduction of the sixteen thousand that will now charge to be uh be charged to the revolving, the athletic revolving. And you'll see the in-school suspension cut in the building administrative support staff, that's where he's budgeted, so that's that cut.
That's the minus four game six.
Yeah.
In, where do we account for the turf field lights? What we pay, because we pay that, correct, that that does not go in the town.
Budget anything.
Yeah.
It's in the middle high school budget, it's right there in front of you.
Right. Yeah, it's it's here.
But we are gonna be using the lights.
Yeah, so we would take that out of whatever we had for rental.
Right, or it would have to come out of Chris's um athletic budget.
Okay.
Which we know is going to be a problem.
Then we go to administration, um.
All zeros.
And my percentage didn't work down the bottom, but um so you can see Cheryl in the benefits piece. We know there's one early retirement incentive. Um you can see the annuity line is consistent as some administrators' contracts that have it. Um the salary adjustment line is where uh we have put money and uh after the revised budget and everybody gets their raises, that will zero out again, just like it does every year. Um and we know that we have a liability of a little over um ten thousand or almost eleven thousand dollars of sick leave buyback. So that's what makes up that number. Um.
Is that sick leave buy, i- it's eleven thousand dollars in sick leave buyback being bought back this year? Or is that a, are we are we accounting for future buybacks?
It's what, when our teacher retires this year, we don't pay them till after July first, so we know exactly what it is.
Got it, okay.
And right now, we know of one.
So we're not, we're not funding a liability, we're we're just paying off.
We're paying off what we owe.
And what, right now, we know of one of one retirement.
You can see the um the reductions, we're on on the curriculum budget, you can see the reductions for the um the secretary going to um school year, and you can see the professional development contract services.
What you were expecting. Are you, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Well, where the question mark is.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, technology. And we moved some money, uh some uh accounts around, we set up a an account this year for technology that we didn't have before. Technology was budgeted in the schools, it's similar to what we did with buildings and grounds a few years ago and special ed, we pulled them out of the schools because that's how I have to report them, um so we developed this this year. Uh and although, you know, it looks like there's increases to network telecommunication lines, it really isn't. It was taken out of our utility line and put over here. Um so the only significant increase, honestly, is the last two lines. There's a hardware, computer hardware equipment, which is about the infrastructure for the high school. And then uh we had to increase the computer lease line by six thousand dollars because last year that was charged, or this current year it was charged to um school choice. Transportation is what the contract says. And.
Why, is it, wasn't it sixty a bus?
For a new bus, it would be sixty a bus.
No, are we, in my head, we were paying sixty, is it less than sixty, it it's the two se- I was, in my head, we were, it was three hundred for the five buses, I could be wrong, maybe I was.
Two sixty-five last year, right, is that what it was, says revised, two sixty-five?
Two sixty-five, five, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay.
I always have the sixty.
Yeah, I guess in my head it was sixty times five, okay.
Fifty-three, fifty-three.
Yeah, I mean, what we were, what we were quoted when we asked, what would it cost for a new bus?
Oh, that was just the marginal.
Sixty thousand, that's how we were operating.
So it's even more expensive than the fifty-five that we had.
They probably just were rounding it.
They were rounding, I think that's what happened, is they were rounding it.
Or maybe they would judge it different because you don't have a contract for that.
Extra bus, exactly.
Um Chris's budget is basically the same as last year. Um he's moved some monies around, he has a couple of new sports. Um you know, he's funding it with thirty-three, you know, his fees, his gate, thirty-three thousand in choice and then sixty-eight, a little over sixty-eight in um judged to budget.
And that that got added when we did the override, because ever, before that, it was really almost one hundred percent funded by parents. And the fees were really much higher than these.
I don't recall that.
Well, that was, when that, when I first came, that override failed, and that was the recommendation at the time. I I actually got the opportunity to review the budget um with the administrators and the school committee at the time and I recommended that they not do it one hundred percent, but that was something that was told in the override that if the override doesn't pass, it's gonna be one hundred percent. And you know, I, you know, when you have a new superintendent coming, the the school committee would have really been forced to, I think, to maintain their credibility to cut what they said they were gonna cut, but because they had a new superintendent coming in, you know, it was easy to say, well, we have a fresh set of eyes. Let's let the superintendent take a look at the budget. And so there were some things that were on that cut list that I did with the administration choose to retain. But there were also things that were in the budget that I chose to take out, right, so and one of the things we talked about was the athletic fees and was there a way, so that time we just put the thirty-three on choice. It wasn't till the override that we were, that we committed the sixty.
The sixty to a budget.
Five or whatever to the budget.
I think it is worth considering that essentially that the budget subsidizes, I mean, it, there were five hundred and forty-six athletes. It's a hundred and twenty-six dollars per athlete being subsidized out of the budget. Um and if you had the other thirty-three in, it's a hundred and eighty-six bucks. That's a big, that's a meaningful subsidy. And I know our, I know our our user fees are not, or athletics fees are not cheap.
No, they're some of the highest in district, in the state, actually.
Yeah.
We ha- actually, I don't know why that man's not doing it anymore, there was a man at the Cape, and he would, he would do these fees. You know, he would do it statewide and he would update it, wasn't just bus, it would be bus fees, sports fees, everything. And we used to like looking at that because you you could see where you compared, and ours were always right up there, some of the highest in the entire state. So we can look at it certainly.
I mean, it's it's.
Yeah. It's it's typical.
These are stretching out, one four seventy-five, it's.
Seven sixty-eight.
A lot, especially times, he's a three, he's four.
Yeah, that's why most people hit family cap.
Family cap, right.
Yep. Are you hitting the family cap?
Yes, you, you will, you'll hit the family cap.
The next section is um buildings and grounds maintenance, um there have been really no changes to this budget and we had hoped, if you remember, last year, we cut twenty-five thousand dollars out to balance. Uh we had hoped to restore it, we're very worried about this. Um you know, to be able to maintain the schools, um it's not a lot of money.
And actually, that that was one of the things that FinCom did speak to last night, they were concerned about, they are concerned about the maintenance um budget and just the different tasks, like, you know, I think they were talking about filters, changing the filters and how I think we said we changed them three times a year and and they said that the industry standards would be more like once a month. But, you know, so.
And I think their their point was more by by doing things, you know, instead of every week, doing it every other week, once a month, every other month. We're we're slipping and and the maintenance costs to repair the device increase.
Right, and honestly, that.
So we're saving it on the salary end, but we're gonna start paying it on the.
And you know, we were, we were in that process for a long time before these building projects came on, that we just felt like we were throwing good money after bad because in some, some of the things, like for example, for the unit ventilators at Pembroke, we couldn't get parts for them. So we're over in Haverhill, we're, yeah, we're over in Haverhill renting space heaters because, and kids are wearing their coats because it took us three months to get, you know, the the part for the unit ventilator, so.
It was the AC at the the high school last year, two years ago.
That's right, that's right, yeah, so so we're not thankfully in that situation now and hopefully that should be a benefit. But but as Joan's saying, Mike is very concerned about, you know, sort of now, especially with the the big new building, you know, stretching the already small budget farther.
Um special education, um the first page, you'll see that top number. Um if you compare F FY sixteen revised to the fifteen actual, you'll see that's where I moved the sped coordinators. Um the next line is the reduction of the part-time uh special education secretary. There are no changes until you get down to the tuitions. And um you know, it there, that's explained on the next page, how, you know, where we stand with tuitions. We are um down to fourteen students, uh we had fifteen students last year that were um tuitioned out. Um our t- our transportation costs went up a little bit, not too bad.
We went down a student, but up in cost.
Well, depends on the student cost.
No, no, for sure, I just.
But but I also say, I also would like to say that, you know, one of the things that I know Donna and principals have worked very hard on is to have our, by throw, having our own in-house programs, trying to, you know, get some control, you know, to the extent we can over this. It wasn't that many years ago, there were thirty-seven students out of the district, so I think that that's noteworthy.
That's fixed volumes.
Yes, it does, yeah.
The these numbers that are on the second page do not reflect the reduction of circuit breaker, that's why you can't compare these numbers on the second page to the line items. Um I took the reduction all out of the result, I took the residential placement line this year. Um it's just easier to have one place, one account that we're taking it out of, so um you know.
But this this really shows you the total cost.
That's the total cost, right?
The actual cost.
Right. And then I'm sure most of you un- understand circuit breaker, but this is a description of how circuit breaker works.
And most people really like to see this, cause you know, by by breaking it down by student, and I think the the public, we we constantly talk about, you know, that sometimes there's a misperception that, you know, when they hear us talk about circuit breaker, that, oh, okay, so you pay for the cost, but then you get the money back. And 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 that's true for a portion of it, right? Um it's a couple of challenges with this, the the threshold for where it would qualify for circuit breaker used to be thirty-nine thousand and now it's forty-two eight, so it's, it takes more to qualify, so that that affects, that affects our budget. And tuition, tuition is reimbursed, but not ever transportation. So in round numbers, you have one point three five total cost, but what's reimbursed the following year. So it's, you you have to incur the cost in that year to get reimbursed the following year, and that reimbursement is four hundred and twenty thousand. So I think that's always important for for people to to sort of understand how that how that works. And it's only for um costs above forty-two thousand dollars, so there are a lot of students who don't cost that much. So there's no reimbursement at all for those children. Okay.
Um the next is just a um a cover sheet describing our revolving accounts. And then the breakdown of the revolving accounts are. And then the breakdown of the revolving accounts are, behind that, and I guess I would only make note that the preschool revolving account, as you can see, is out of balance.
Even after taking those two positions.
Right, we took the two positions out, we're still out of balance, so we're either gonna have to generate more revenue or reduce expenses, in whatever way we can. Can't reduce them in salaries, so we're gonna have to look at supplies or hopefully substitutes wherever we can.
Is this out of balance because of the missing tuition?
Yeah.
That assumes everyone pays every dollar.
Yeah, that's based on what we believe we'll get in revenue.
Do we, do we budget a deficit in actual receipt of payments?
Yeah.
So we budget anticipating getting a hundred percent?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But actually, we've done very well. And we sent a letter out to parents. I think in a week or so, we collected half of it. And I think there's one or two stragglers right now. It, it really, the letter did work, and.
Can we use that letter for lunch?
I was gonna say, are you gonna use the same one?
They can't, because I can't say, we did threaten some people that they, students wouldn't return. I can't not feed.
Can't kick them out of lunch.
I can't not feed students.
We can twerk, we can tweak it a little bit.
It's a good letter.
It worked. Yeah, it worked, so. I mean, it's unfortunate that you have to do that, but, so, I don't know if anybody has any questions about.
Well, I, I just had a question about the, the school lunch revolving.
Mm-hmm.
Just.
Yeah, I mentioned to Joan that you had asked the question at the last meeting, so.
Yes.
We wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, because for a while there, we were looking at that pretty closely. The revolving account for that, and I wanted an update, so I got one, but it just, the concern is also the, the amount of.
Right, and we budget what we believe we will collect based upon sales and, and, you know, how it keeps me updated. If we don't, like last year, we had to make up what was outstanding at the end of that year, which was, I don't know, five or six thousand dollars.
Yeah, she's, Heather last week had said eighteen thousand right now is, is owed.
Right, and I, I had, Barbie emailed me earlier and asked, well, we're doing the letter. I mean, I did do it over the summer, and we were successful in getting some of it. I guess the school committee will have to take this up and, and through governance, if they wanna make a decision that we go further with collection processes. I mean, we can take people to a small claims court, but I think it should be a committee.
We drive up the, the cost too for the legal, well, small claims, we.
It's like forty dollars or whatever to file, and I go.
But then you would go and, you wouldn't be doing your regular work.
Right. And, and, and honestly, and honestly, when you go in for something like this, because I told you I did it in another district, you go to mediation. So the parent, I mean, obviously, though, they want to pay, you know, they just, they can't afford it.
Right.
And they'll promise through mediation, and then.
Has to necessarily get done.
You get one or two payments, and then, you know, you gotta follow them till they graduate, and then you don't let them participate in graduation exercises or things like that. In, in Beverly, we had a lot more fee things, so we pay for elementary music. Well, you didn't pay your kindergarten, you can't, sorry, you can't do it. Or you can't do enrichment, you know, all these, you can't take the bus, you can't do this, because we had more fees.
Is, is this, is this a problem in other districts still, like that, really? So it's, it's, it's not just Georgetown? Because to me, that eighteen thousand dollars, I was really surprised at that number.
It's like two dollar lunches or two forty-five, whatever.
That will come down.
That is, yeah.
Yeah, but unfortunately, I mean, we'd have to get the data for you, but I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's a lot of two dollar lunches. I think it's a, a fewer, a few people with significant balances.
I got a two-page list of everybody that had over a hundred dollars outstanding in food services.
I, I mean, a hundred dollars is, on two dollar lunches, is a lot of lunches.
Right. Yeah.
Well, there were alternatives, cheese sandwich. I bring up every time.
Well, Heather was against that. She had said the, the hashtag, you know, sandwich of shame, or what did you find?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's what she said, sandwich of shame.
Yeah.
We did it, I told you, we did it in New Hampshire when I worked in New Hampshire.
They gave the cheese sandwiches.
Cheese sandwich, milk, and apple. It qualifies for.
But what Heather was saying is that.
Right, everybody knows you got the cheese sandwich.
You know, everybody knows you got the cheese sandwich, so she called it the sandwich of shame.
This is something we need to address, though, just try and recoup anything that we can with that.
Well, it would be interesting to see, though, these communities that we're compared to, Lindfield and Manchester Essex, are they having the same issues that we're having?
Um, at the end, I could go back in my listserv, because at the end of last year, the talk on the listserv was about how, it was just a basic question. How do you do the reimbursement from the district? Was it a journal entry, or was this? Everyone weighed in, so everyone has dealt with this. You know, maybe not to the size that we have currently, and hopefully we won't have it at the end of the year, but every single person has had to deal with this.
Well, it made, made national headlines. I mean, many times when children were denied lunches at all.
Right.
Right, so, and I know, it's, it's a very difficult.
It's very difficult.
Uh, situation to be in, but just that amount of money is, to me, is just not acceptable. When, when we're doing these cuts and such, it's, it's just.
We agree.
The next section is the grants that we have. Most of our grants are entitlement grants. We did have the creativity grant. I don't know, I put it in there, we are gonna get it next year. So, you know, it's, you know, it's a guess. Our entitlement grants have gone down every single year. So, you know, these are based on what we currently, what we currently get. And, you know, you can see, especially the IDA grant is, like, you know, pays for the summer program, pays for half of all our aides at the middle high school.
That's how come you get reimbursement through Medicaid.
Right, Medicaid, right, because we took, we, we took the tuitions off there, but, you know, we don't get a lot in grants. We don't qualify for a lot of entitlement grants.
We don't, well, I was just gonna ask that. How, because at one point, we, we talked about the possibility of getting like a grant writer. This was a few years ago. Um, so that's the thing, like, I mean, you know, there are so many grants out there, maybe we don't qualify for a lot of them, but I'm sure we, we must qualify for some that we're not getting.
Or private foundations, probably, we might qualify for, but nothing really through the state, because we either have to be high need, which, you know, maybe we'd be considered a little bit more of that now, but high need or poor. Have a high free and reduced lunch.
And they just totally change their calculation on.
Or what happens is we, we can maybe be involved in a grant, but we'd have to partner with the high needs district, so we might have to say to Haver, you know, or you wanna go in with us on this grant. But sometimes, you know, it's hard to split up how that's gonna work, and, you know, so we, we haven't just have, we're always mining, mining the field. We've, we were talking today about, you know, something, could, some of the technology things we need, could we go after grants for very specific things? But, um, we, we had talked about the grant writer Barbie, thinking that we could hire somebody who, you know, if they got grants, a certain percentage of theirs, so they pay for themselves. We, we did, we never anticipated we'd have the money in the budget to pay for it.
We, we tried that, and we didn't. And we had a, we had like thirty-seven percent free and reduced lunch, and it just, just.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yes, I mean, it's certainly something we.
It's hard, it's hard.
Yeah.
Just happened to talk to Heather Torrey today, and she did qualify for the, I think it's a healthy eating grant. Yeah, she got the garden grant, yeah.
Oh, she got the garden grant for the high school, and, yeah, so she's very excited about that and the kids, and.
Yeah.
Maybe that could be integrated into science and now, or something. You know, anything helps, right?
Yeah, everything helps.
Four thousand dollars. Yeah.
For these, are they all variable, like, if we don't get the grant, are we still having to find money back on the budget side?
Well, these are.
Or, or are some of these, we don't get the grant, it goes away?
So, for example.
Sort of like, like the, the, the.
Well, the, the creativity grant, if you didn't, if you didn't get it, then.
That would just go away.
There we go.
Those expenses would go away, but for example, I think when Donna started here, we were over three hundred in the IDA grant.
We were like three twenty-something.
Right, so you can see in four years, the reduction.
So that's just shifting back to.
So I would have to, so if, if it comes in at two eighty-five, I'm gonna have to go and find the difference in the budget.
Well, Title One's another good example. I mean, we, when I first came here, I thought it was a lot, but Title One was in the sixty thousand dollar range, and you can see now it's cut in half.
And what's that based on, Title One?
That's based on a formula that the state puts out, but we, we give them information on the percentages of free and reduced lunch. So actually, our free and reduced lunch percentage has increased.
Correct.
Um, for years, it was around five to seven percent, and now I think it's ten to eleven.
So if, if it's increased, then does Title One increase?
Well, arguably, yes, but then depends on what the federal government gives to the state, and then there's how much money the state has to distribute. So if the federal government cuts the Title One grant, then the state has less to give. They'll still give it to us on a formula basis, but that number has definitely varied. And all we do with it really honestly is put professional salaries on it. I mean, when, when I was in Greenfield, I was the Title One director, and we had a three, three point two million dollar grant. So we had salaries on it, but we also had a lot of program kind of things. Like, we're talking about interventions, remember? We've talked about this. Normally, you'd buy intervention materials out of your Title One grant, but we had to figure it out a different way because we didn't, we couldn't take it out of Title One. The, the grants are very tight, and like Joan said, they're mostly, if not all of them, are entitlement grants, which means you get them because you qualify for them at the, at the level the state determines. And then, of course, this is the historical chart on the grants. So you can see that there, the ones that are consistent are the entitlement grants, federal dollars. The, you know, others, we know, we might've got them for two or three years, and then they went away. That's why they refer to grants as soft money, right? It's not money you can now always count on, and generally, you, if you put salaries on them, and it goes away, that's when it encroaches on the budget.
Look at the middle years, and you had one point two million and one point four million.
Yeah, one point four.
Yeah.
Even just the last.
All the stimulus money.
The last five years going from six eighty-three to four twenty-eight.
Yeah, yeah, significant.
Right.
The, um, the safe and drug-free schools, so that's, that's gone.
Yep, that's gone completely, yeah.
Yeah, that, because that, like, look how much it started off at, and then how quickly it went down.
Yeah, well, that's why I like this grant, this, this graph, because it does show you this historical. You know, Title Five was there for a little while, and then that went away.
Yeah. And then, of course, the, you know, the private grants, and, and we are so thankful for.
Absolutely.
You know, for partnership that we have with the G E F and the P T A, and.
Absolutely.
Um, but they're, you know, experiencing tough times too.
Yep, like we said to the FinCom last night, you know, I mean, every single meeting, we accept donations from people in town, you know, for, you know, their generosity.
Significant donations.
Significant, yeah.
It's amazing how generous people are.
Well, the next tab is school choice. You can see what we're projecting for revenue. I'm not projecting any carry forward. We're funding thirty-three thousand dollars for athletics out of that, and then salaries for one eighty-four. So there may be room, as long as we get the ten students. Last year, we opened it up to ten, we only got eight, I believe. So this is projecting ten new students.
That was my question. I, I said, were we turning people away? And you said, yes, we were.
Oh, the, I misunderstood you.
Oh, in kindergarten.
In many other grades.
In kindergarten. Yeah, in many other grades, right. So we didn't reach that, what we wanted, the ten. We opened them in grades nine and ten, I think.
Uh, nine.
Just grade nine. We had ten slots, I think we only got eight.
Why only in grade?
Because that's what we determined the enrollment would allow. Because that's where, that's where you have, some kids go to vocational, some kids go to private, so, so that number is typically, every year, it's typically lower.
So are you going to open this up to all grades, or just again, very specific grades?
Again, we'll talk about that in March or April. We usually talk about it, and we'll go through the enrollment with you. Because right now, I can tell you that we don't anticipate, you saw the numbers in, in elementary, I don't anticipate any elementary openings. And then in the middle school, we're raising class sizes by going from five, from six sections to five. So I wouldn't go there, and then in the high school, you know, ninth grade might be the option that we have, because generally, we don't take kids after tenth grade. So it could be ninth and tenth grade, but we'll look at the, we'll look at the overall enrollment.
Yeah, I'm happy to hear that, that, you know, because I was thinking, oh, are we, are we just gonna, you know, just say it's open? So, you know, I've always been happy with the recommendations that the teachers give, and, and believe that they look at it as what's most beneficial to the children here in Georgetown.
To the Georgetown children, that's the primary.
Right. Yeah, absolutely, so, but my concern too is, there's such a, a small area that we can open it up, and what if we don't get that?
I know. Well, that's the point.
You know, I mean, in, in here too, you showed the, um, the amount of kids that go out in ninth grade.
Right.
Um, so, you know, it does, um, it does open up spots, but, um.
But that's kind of not the direction you want to go in.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, we, we talked, we, we definitely talked about that as well.
So March and April, we look at that?
Yeah, we usually, we have to, I think the law says we have to decide by May first, May or, May first or June first.
Okay.
But typically, we, we talk about it in, in March or April, just because, you know, we, we wanna let people know, right? Because if people are looking for school choice, they're generally looking around that time, right? Trying to make the decision, and so, and we have to, we follow the law. So if the school committee says, we'll open ten slots in these grades, we put out an advertisement, and then we entertain applications. If there's less than ten people, all of those people get in. If there's ten, if there's more than ten people, we do a lottery, except if you have a sibling here, then you, you don't go in the lottery, you get the first priority. Right, so if Pam's son, one of her sons was here, and she wants to bring her other son in, and we open a slot at that age, Pam would get first dibs before we do the lottery.
Is there, can you revise that number, or once it's set, is it set? Just thinking about kindergarten, and I'm not, you know, we don't really know our number until August, but I would assume by then, most people have figured out what they're doing. So are we, are we able to? I guess two things, are we able to change the number? Hey, as of today, you know, as of June first, we can fit, and I'm making up a number, five in kindergarten, but we don't get the enrollment that we expect come August, could we open up another five come August, or are we locked into that, whatever that initial decision is?
Well, in kindergarten, we have always treated it a little bit differently. We've always said, because we know it's somewhat volatile, we don't generally tell people that we're opening school kindergarten slots in March or April. So, when we report it to the state, we don't necessarily tell them we're opening it. However, we, we do understand that kindergarten is actually not mandated in the same way as the other grades are too. So, we've always told people, you're welcome to apply, but we need to watch the, the tu- the tuitions. And then we usually say by August first, we come to the committee and we say, look, if they hit, if we hit a hundred and ten, we don't recommend adding any. So that's, we, we have handled kindergarten a little bit differently.
Do we know what the staff percentage of choice is? So staff, current staff.
That children?
Yes, who have children, who will come in on choice.
I believe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say off the top of my head, I can think of five.
Oh, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Is that what you're saying, Laura? Well, not bad for the top of my head.
Five.
Five.
Five throughout the district.
Throughout the district.
And our, is staff, are staff given priority in a lottery, or no?
It's, it's interesting. We have a, um, we have a policy that the school committee did a couple of years ago, that said, you have to go through the school choice process, but, you know, the, the school committee has the opportunity, if they want to, to accept faculty children. Okay, so unfortunately, for example, I can think of someone last year who really, really desperately wanted her child to come to kindergarten, and she waited and waited and waited, and we didn't open any slots, and so she, her daughter wasn't able to come. So.
Yeah.
You know.
But there, but there were no slots open.
There were no slots open. But I, I think that.
But what I'm saying is, if there were slots.
I think, I think we have to do the, we do the lottery regardless, I think.
We do, so for example, one year, we had four faculty members that wanted to have their children come in, and there were seven people. So literally, we were fortunate, because all four got pulled, and it was completely, I mean, we had four people standing around so that we could, you know, and they all got pulled, but yeah, the tricky part would have been, well, what would have happened if three of them did, and not the fourth? So, again, that policy would have allowed the school committee to say, okay, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna allow that fourth one in. The debate has always been back and forth about, the positives are, it's a nice benefit for the teachers, it motivates them to stay and to keep their children here. There's a lot of, you know, benefits to it. On the other hand, there's the, the argument that, well, you don't live in town, and so it's a benefit. You know, it caught, in other words, you don't get, you can't get school choice money for that child. So the, the town is basically saying, we will allow your child to come, and there'll be no, no financial benefit.
So, but they should be paying school choice if their child comes.
If they don't get a slot. If they, if they don't, let's say, like, let's use that lottery. If they don't get a slot. If they, if they don't, let's say, like, let's use that lottery situation I just told you. So the three would have, and then we would have got reimbursement for the fourth.
So that one, right, if we allowed the one and we wouldn't get.
But that one, we had said the one could come, then it would, they would just appear in our district and they wouldn't, there would be no financial.
I remember I always talk about this little graph that I like. So Joan was able to find it and it just, it talks about chapter seventy-eight, which is coming from the state. And then the foundation budget, same thing. And then, then the little dotted line represents required net school spending and then the little uh di- diamond line uh represents the actual net school spending. So interestingly, you can see like, remember where we had to have the override, the override and the stimulus money? See where it crashes into the bar? So what's happening is Georgetown's, you know, required net school spending. And then they're slightly above, slightly above, slightly above, and then boom, they're in the tower. That's because the foundation budget was threatening to be not, not su- not sufficient. So then now, we're above it. So the hard thing is when districts are above the line, it's hard to say to the town.
We're not well above it.
You're not supporting.
Do you think we're well above it? When you turn the page, you'll see the other districts are well above it.
Is we were going to just make a quick little table that just found out like what percentage, what percentage these are above, just so we can kind of have a little. So then, then you look at Littleton. And then.
Is, is this all on the website too?
Yeah.
Well, it's not yet, cause we were having trouble with the links today, but I'm. She put, he put the budget, oh that, this is, but I have links that Laura's gonna try to help me put on tomorrow on the website. That will take you to the Department of Ed pages where they have. There's so much information now for reports that you can get, as long as you know where to go. It's amazing, you can compare us to any district in the state on anything now. So spending or, you know, scores or whatever, it's really, their website is awesome now.
So one of the things we're trying to do is not only look, you know, as, cause the budget represents a single year, right? So we're trying to do more of the long-range planning and then also to look and compare, you know, with some comparisons. That's why we look at teacher salaries and comparisons to average and, and two, two sets of comparisons. And here, these are the chap- these are basically how the state reports um the chapter seventy trends. So you can just, these are, we chose these commi- communities, cause they're the communities we're compared to.
And Manta's to Essex, I think they probably didn't file the end of the year report. I think it, it must be delayed or something. And then the, the, the next set of reports are, is our comparison against the state average with per pupil expenditures.
Okay, so.
So we're the light pink.
We're the light pink, right.
Down the bottom table.
We're nineteenth in net school spending. Yes, I mean, we're ni- nineteenth in.
Out of three hundred and twenty-five districts.
Oh, oh, we're the pink.
Which is in the lower, lowest six percent.
And then you can see the altitude and the same thing for the other.
Where did you see that we were eighteenth, or did you just?
No, we, we got, we looked at information.
It's eighteen? You know, but it wasn't long ago that we were the bottom.
We were zero. For the override in two thousand and ten. Yes, there's no doubt that there's been progress. It's just interesting then to look at the same comparisons.
Yeah, you put a lot of time into this, I appreciate it.
Oh yeah, this is incredible, it really is.
And that's, that's it?
That's it.
Well, it's it for this phase, right? Yeah, this is not it, this is the beginning. Well, it's, it's a um, it's a lot of information, but um, a lot of times I feel overwhelmed when I get things like this. But, but it really is very readable and understandable and I appreciate that because it's important stuff. You don't wanna be, you know, confused and, you know, I think I sent you only a few emails. It was more like. Most budgets are very complicated. It's understandable that the community asks questions and doesn't really understand, you know, um, and we, we want people to ask questions. I mean, we welcome those opportunities because we, we don't want people making assumptions that, that aren't, that aren't based on facts. We're, you know, we're happy to answer any, any questions from the public. So, I mean, obviously that concludes our presentation. So coming forward now, y- your, your, the plan I think is that you're going to discuss this again on the twenty-fifth. And there is a public hearing, so I will put something up on the website about that and I know Laura's got the information posted already. Um, you know, and obviously we're talking about it on television, so we welcome people to, to come. It's so, Laura, what time is the public hearing start?
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five, okay, and the meet, public meeting, our meeting starts at seven, right? So people can come.
And will that be in the record too?
Yeah, I think, um, I think Maggie Van Galen is now, well, she's now working for the record and covering the um education news, um, so she was at the meeting last night and I'm sure she'll, I'm sure she'll come to the public hearing, so that, that information will be in the, in the paper. So it's the twenty-fifth and then the dec- decision is whether or not the committee will vote to adopt or do it at the first meeting in March, although last night we heard from the FinCom that that timing might be a little askew, right?
Well, they said they wouldn't realistically know what the number would be as of the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of February.
Of February.
That's understandable.
Which is, I mean, certainly understandable, cause they're, they're doing their departmental meetings the twenty-seventh, the Saturday following that meeting.
Did they give you any idea when our hours would be?
The first Wednesday of March, tentatively.
Yes.
The second, I think.
So if the plan here was to adopt the budget on a March tenth, that's why I said that, that doesn't work.
Yeah, Wednesday's March second?
Yeah, so.
Did they do the second or the ninth, Michael? Because I thought they talked about the ninth.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was the ninth.
It's the ninth.
We should unlock our calendars and for that.
You would be approving it on the tenth.
No, the tenth is the Wednesday. I was off by a day. The tenth is the Wednesday, the eleventh is a Thursday.
Oh, it is?
So the, we, our school committee meeting is on the eleventh.
Okay.
No. March ninth.
March ninth, seven P M.
FinCom.
Just take back everything.
Okay, let's try that one more time. March ninth at seven P M, we go to the FinCom and have a conversation with them, right? But, so the, the question is whether or not, if you're ready to, if you are ready to adopt the budget, obviously on the twenty-fifth, you could do that. Right, I, what I have seen sometimes with other committees, if that di- didn't work, they have done a single item agenda the following week. So the first week in March, cause you, you're gonna talk to the FinCom the second week in March. Sometime, you know, sometimes I've seen committees come together and just take, you know, here's the final discussion on the budget, psh, vote and off it goes. The thing is, we wanna give it to FinCom and enough time for them to review it, right? So they were asking us today about that.
They were hedging on, cause we were talking about giving to them on the twenty-fifth, assumed that we were gonna adopt it on the twenty-fifth. And they were asking earlier.
Right, so.
Maybe we should have a school committee meeting on March seventeenth.
Well, uh, March seventeenth.
Oh, that's the wrong, like, that's even later.
Yeah, it's later, too late. They want it, so, so, I mean, ar- arguably, you know, if you, some of you understand the budget a little bit better. It's kind of the format you're, you're used to, but they're not, right? Although I don't know if they would read it as detailed as you did, okay? But, you, you know, they sounded like they would love it a week before we meet with them. So if we just figure that, just work with that for a minute, if the meeting is on the ninth, they would, they would hopefully have it on the second.
So we really would need to vote on, on the twenty-fifth.
You'd need to vote on the twenty-fifth or else at, you know, uh, March first or something, you don't. At just a special meeting.
Okay.
But that's up to you guys, how you wanna handle that. If you don't get a lot of public.
Let's see how the twenty-fifth goes.
If you don't get a lot of public in- input, then the twenty-fifth is, probably makes sense, right? But if you, like, that was to your point, Michael, if you got a lot of public input and you needed to deliberate or discuss that, you know, you still could fit, finish that discussion probably on that night, but the question is whether or not you'd be able to.
But if we're meeting on the twenty-fifth, Town Hall is closed on the Fri- what's, what's the first day that we could actually have a meeting? I always get the, the rules messed up. The Friday being closed.
A Monday, Monday the first.
So the first day we could do it would be Wednesday.
Wednesday, the third.
First day you could do what?
The first day that we could, we could do the single item agenda.
Well, but, but you could, yeah, oh yeah, you could schedule that and Laura could post it and then just cancel it.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, that's fair, yeah, that, that probably makes sense. So schedule it.
So what dates are there that week, Michael? I don't know, I would get.
What's the te-
Four.
Just if, if you had to have a meeting, so that if you're trying to get it to them on the second, so if you get it to them on the third, not a big deal.
The twenty-ninth or the first.
Twenty-ninth or the first.
Monday Tuesday.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth doesn't work.
Um, so the first would work for you?
Yeah, we have that start school later, meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So should we do a, put one in for the first?
Book that in for the first, that would be your, your adoption. And then, and then we, I mean, obviously unless you make sweeping changes or th- as a result of the public hearing, your own discussion, we pretty much ha- all we'd have to do is change out the pages that were involved, cause we've got the budget books. You know, we'd have the budget books assembled.
For you ladies?
Yes, yes, so we adopt the budget on the first. March first.
Possibly.
That's a Tuesday night, so we will j- we'll, we'll just um have Laura just schedule it, like you had said, if we need to cancel it, we can.
It's a, it's a tricky, it's a tricky thing, cause we're, we would be voting on the first to adopt a budget. Anticipating hearing from FinCom a week later that we need to go back and do a lot more work. So, so it's a little, it's a little, do all the work to not the budget, but.
It happened last year.
No, I know it did, it, it's, it's.
We had to revote, you had to revoke the budget.
Yeah.
I'm thinking if we.
I'm not gonna say it. But you have to, you have to have a school committee's budget to present to FinCom, so. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one has to be.
Yeah.
So we'll do that, we'll stock on the twenty-fifth and then we'll book it for the second, which is a Tuesday night and.
The first.
The first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I totally screwed it up, I'm sorry.
The first, Tuesday night and then we'll go from there.
Okay. So we can also add that change to the, um, to the website, so everybody knows that March first would be.
Okay, then I'll tell Maggie that too, because I was the one feeding her the date, so just so she's aware of it too.
All right, great.
All right, that's good. Thank you for um going through that, I think it was um definitely eye-opening, new experience. Peter has program of um.
Peter has program of studies. I was gonna talk to you about, I was gonna talk to you about courses you want to study.
I wanna know what I was gonna do before all this budget talk? Okay, I guess I will be very brief and um, there's really not too much because of the budget uncertainty. We, we weren't very ambitious. Um, so, um, we'll start with the middle school. And everything in the middle school, except for the last item, we already do. So, um, I apologize, but we have, I don't think this has been revised, the middle school book for some time. So we're just trying to get it up to date in an official way. Um, so, uh, the first thing, obviously, we took all the sixth grade stuff out of there. Um, we revised the grade scale that you approved last year that um made uh um, called for, created a D minus, if you will. Um, we put in some wording about the advisory block and the teen block. And uh, there was a curriculum change in grade seven math level three, so we put that in. Um, we have a very successful uh robotic selective this year and we put the description in there. And uh, there is a change uh for grade seven uh exploratory foreign language program. So currently, it's in trimesters, we have three languages and um each third of the year, people switch. And by the end of the year, everybody has a taste and then they can make a more informed choice. Problem with that is I really need to know what their choice is uh in about a month from now. So that, that last group really doesn't get it all. So uh, what, what the foreign language department would like to do, which I support a hundred percent, is they want to uh do it uh by quarter, even though it's a trimester. Switch every quarter, so they'll get the three languages in three quarters, so it'll be condensed a little. And then the, then they can make that decision and that fits the scheduling process well. And then the fourth quarter, they'll all do the same thing, they'll get a taste of uh the cultures of each one. So they used to do that within, uh, you would get a taste of the Mandarin culture when you had Mandarin. So there's really no loss of content, they're just, they're just, every, all three teachers are doing all three cultures in fourth quarter. So.
And they all um feel comfortable doing that?
Yep, yep. So that's the middle school.
And then it gives you the opportunity to then know what they want for one moving on. Let me just ask you a question about the revised grading scale, have you received any um, any comments? Parent comments or student comments, nothing, fine, fine.
I mean, that, it's to their advantage, really.
Yeah, I know, what, yeah, I just, lately I have been hearing, people say, I didn't know that and, and uh interesting that they just didn't seem in favor. I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of it, but um, so I wasn't sure if, you know.
It's in the, it's in the handbook, right?
It is in the handbook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you approved it last year with the program of studies, I think.
This, this, dividing the seventh grade language program into four quarters makes a lot more sense to me. I always thought it must be very difficult to, to manage the trimesters.
That last quarter is a, is a problem.
And I can totally see why you wanna know the choice ahead of, ahead of time, so.
Also gives the student a chance to actually.
And, and cultures around the world, you can get a lot of excellent, you know, content in there, I mean, that's really, I would like to see the whole social studies program get more global. Um, so, this is a, works on many fronts, in my opinion.
But not interfere with civics.
Oh, that's coming back.
No, I would never wanna interfere with civics, Barbie.
The high school, uh, we, we just did a lot of updating with um, the Mass State College and university system. Changed some of their eligibility requirements, so we just updated our book. Um, some updates from uh the college board with, with um AP recommendations. They used to recommend that you would only, that, that a person would only take two AP courses at a time and now they dropped that. The, the guidance counseling service section that we had the description, um, new guidance director, she wanted to, to put her um, touch on that, so it's um, it's not that we're really doing anything different, it was just kinda rewrote it. In the uh business department, um, we included the National Business Honors Society designation in there in what it takes. Um, we also um, kind of uh a, a more uh descriptive on what business courses can uh make you DECA eligible. Um, so, we, we made that clear. So there, again, there aren't any changes here, we're just um being more specific. Um, really, the only change that we're asking for is a ceramics two uh class and the description is included. And the math department would like to um require calculators in all courses that it was recommended. And that's really, um, doesn't really affect anybody, because everybody brings a calculator anyway.
It's more than just the phone, right? They need that, that.
Graphing calculator.
Graphing calculator, yep.
Um, who will teach the ceramics course?
Uh, Mrs. Cannon.
Oh nice.
I have to say, I saw students ceramics work from the, the class.
Yeah.
It was phenomenal, it was really amazing.
Basically with the, so she, yeah.
Other pieces, I was very impressed.
Yeah, she teaches multiple sections of ceramics one, but she, there's kids that always wanna do more with that. So it, it will be, it won't be a, like a standalone class, like a lot of our electives, we're not big enough to, to offer so many things. So the, the teachers are good enough to, to have, you know, multiple classes in, in at the same time. So this will be like a combo ceramic one and two, we do that with photography and video and stuff like that. So that's about it.
Hey, just one more question, um, are you accepting donations of Legos for the robotics? Do you need donations? Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah.
Cause I, I have a lot of old Legos from the past and I've cleaned them and taken them apart, I have them in big baggies of multicolor Legos. That'd be great.
Well, we hope the school committee will approve that.
Around that have these extra Lego things and wondering pieces.
Are you for hire to come and do closets? My daughter's closet needs some work.
Well, have you read, there's a book called The Magic of Tidying, something.
Oh really?
Yes. It's very important to do for one's sanity. We try to keep things tidy. Recycling, you know, recycling, moving things on to the next higher business.
Okay, so we do need to vote on this. So, uh, Chair Lintin's taken a motion to approve the changes to the middle and high school program of studies for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, as presented by Principal.
So moved.
Second? You go ahead. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, Peter.
While we're talking about budget, I should mention that we do not print hard copies of programs of studies anymore, it's all electronic. Uh, if anybody uh doesn't have some type of device to access that, then we would print them a hard copy, so there's a savings there.
Oh, that's, that is good, I'm glad that you're mindful of that. So they would just then notify Rudy, right, and Rudy would just give them a hard copy?
In the, um, we do the same thing with the, the uh student handbooks. So there's a sign off and it says, if you want one, we'll give you one.
Okay, so you can ask them.
Yeah, saves on printing costs.
I do too, yeah.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, your son.
Sympathy from this group.
Okay, so we have some line item transfers. So, um, Chair Lintin's taken a motion to approve line item transfers number one thirty-three to one sixty-one in the amount of one hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents, dated January twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen. As presented by John Laporto.
So moved?
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Drive carefully.
Okay, the second quarter financing report.
Right, I, I don't know if you have any questions on it, it's been so long since I did it. Um, uh, you'll see a lot of those um accounts that are in the red, um, balance, because that's why we did the transfers. Um, I'm not expecting a, um, to input a budget freeze. Um, Donna has one kid that, you know, is kinda wavering on and uh, she's working with them. Um, right now, I feel like I don't wanna put a budget freeze in considering how tight the budget is next year, like, if people are able to purchase what they need. Save a little money for next year, um, but, you know, I feel, I feel like this year, we didn't get clobbered with the leaves of abscences. Which really created such a hardship on our substitute lines last year.
Remember that?
So, uh, right now, we're okay, so I don't have any plan to implement a freeze.
That's good.
Good news.
Do you, do you, um, to, um, get intimidated by this? Because that, this, I was intimidated by this and I'm sure Joan would go over it with you.
I'd be happy to.
I don't know, because I'm certainly not someone that would feel comfortable enough to like answer your questions, but.
It's just a lot of numbers.
It is a lot of numbers.
And honestly.
Like to what to look for.
Printing problems again, because it should've been that way, so, who knows? Um, I will say though, that uh, when you talk about this budget book, lots of places, this is, this is what they would get for a proposed budget, with just another column added.
Thank you for that.
Yes, that, honestly, lots of places do that.
They used to get it here like that, it was just a la- large thick page of, a packet of lots of numbers.
So, but if you had questions, if, if you looked back now that you have this budget book, you could see those numbers in the departments they are, you could see what, what they, you know, what the account is. So, you know, when you look up, you know, the computer administrative district, whatever, the first line on the report, well, that's Wes's salary. I mean, that's, that's what it is. Um, so, you know, I'm happy to a- answer any questions, I feel like it's my job to point out to you when there are issues. Right now, I don't feel like there are any issues and if there was a special ed issue, then I'd be coming probably before the committee saying we'll have to implement a freeze. If we had utilities on our budget, we probably would have a freeze. Um, I think utilities are really going over the top in the town. Um, you know, the Pembroke School is a lot more, I think it's a lot more than they had anticipated. But, you know, lucky for us, we don't have the volatile um accounts like utilities and um health insurance, things like that. So, you know, it's mostly special ed and substitutes is all we really have to watch.
That's right, that's usually what we want.
So right now, we're.
Cause everything else is encumbered, we, we know what, most of it's a salaries, right?
Yeah.
Um, and so a lot of times what school committee members will do is they'll look at, well, where are the things that are in the minus? Right, and, and that usually is what Joan will, you, if you see it in the minus, it's because it's an area that either we need to transfer money in or.
Something's charging correctly.
Something, yeah, we're charging something correctly and moved it, but there's always an explanation, so don't hesitate to ask. We wouldn't want you to be unclear about that.
But as you have said, if you, you think that there's something that we need to.
I bring it forward, absolutely, and I wouldn't wait till the end of a quarter, if I felt like there was something significant, then I'd bring it forward.
So, um, the next item is the um new transportation.
Yep.
Software.
Yep.
Um, so Barry, Wes and, and, so you, they were just as happy with it?
Yes, and, well, they, I don't really use it, the, the significant piece.
Cam too, for all the work that you did to bring it to us.
Did you try it, was there a?
Well, we did a, a kind of webinar with the salesperson on the, um, you know, on the phone with us. Um, what I liked is that I can use it, Laura could use it, Diane could use it, so.
It's intuitive. It's web-based.
So when people come in, I used to feel so bad, people would come in and say, I don't know if I qualify for transportation, well, I don't know either. So give me a name, your number, your address, kid's ages, all that stuff, and then I'd email Barry and it'd be all, you know, it was summer, he's not around. Or he is around, I hate to bother him, then it creates, well, he'd have to check, then he'll get back to me, then you gotta get back to the parent. It was like, at least if we could log in and, and use it, we could at least tell parents, yes, and your name will go to the transportation director and you don't need to worry. Or no, you know, and maybe there's an issue with the safety zones and all that stuff, but I felt like we turned so many people away in the summer with no information. Okay, well, guess I'll wait, so I feel like that would be a benefit to us. Um, Barry saw lots of benefits, I mean, we basically put it in his hands to decide. And he really felt like, you know, the um, transportation company can use it and it did a lot more than.
Web-based, so it's not, it's not dependent on a fixed computer, you know, linked to a server, right?
And we also have some of their programs, we use other software, other programs.
We have, our, our municipal finance package is Tyler's.
Software.
Yes.
Right, yeah. So, so this is a three-year commitment, I, I'm not sure, I had to bring it forward, cause it's not really a lease, but I felt like the school committee should, you know, be aware of it and, and actually vote to approve it, cause we're changing what we do now. Um, the money is, the, first year is more expensive, because we have to pay an annual payment and the payment for implementation. Wes tried hard to get them down, but Tyler's a pretty big company and they don't.
Probably to, to do the data conversion.
Right, it's do a lot.
So the yearly is less?
The yearly is less than what we pay, fi- by five hundred dollars, yes, less than what we pay for TransFinder, so.
Wow.
Yeah. Isn't that crazy?
Love getting more for less.
Right, well, this is a big company, I mean, Tyler's a big, big company, I'm not sure TransFinder, how big it is. But they are going into the TransFinder market, you know, they, that's why they produce this.
We're entering into this agreement now?
Yes, we are doing it now, because Barry wants to start using it, instead of starting, trying to start July one.
Kind of blame him when he gets inundated.
We, we really need to let people know, initially, if they qualify for transportation before the end of the school year.
Cause we're still working on that.
Cause remember, we want them to tell us in the summer.
Yes.
You know, we, we, we want that to be clear, cause we wanna have the rate, the rates, the routes done sooner.
Yeah.
At, yeah.
That's, that's good. Yes, that's good. So we don't have to talk about the, the day-to-day, it's just, okay. Um, chair will entertain a motion to approve the three-year license agreement to Tyler Technologies in a total of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, with three annual payments of three thousand dollars, with an initial three thousand, five hundred implementation payment, as presented.
Second.
It'll be moved, so moved.
Discussion? I meant to say so moved, but I jumped into second. Discussion?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
That's what I'm looking forward to hearing how well that, how.
The, the person, the rep called me today, and I said, my meeting's tonight, 'cause I didn't, remember, I wasn't able to come last time, so.
Yeah, good. That's right. We see it when it's up and running.
Sure.
I'd love to see what it, yeah, I know, what it, it's the map and all that, yeah.
I know. Sounds like it's bringing us into the twenty-first.
We can ask Diane to help us.
Take the Barry and Wes come and do a demo.
Yeah.
We can. Uh, so we got a shed from, and we got a donation of a shed.
We did get a shed. Yes.
Um, and I, I was just wondering where it was, where was it going?
Yes.
Um, I did, I did notice.
So the athletic director got it, so it would be for.
Where he's locating my house, I'm not sure.
But that was, that was really nice.
That was very nice, very nice.
Certainly, I'm sure can be, um, greatly utilized by Chris and the athletic department.
It says he's donating a new shed for the turf field, so my guess is it's going to be out somewhere near the turf field.
So he's gonna be able to put all the things in the shed, that's great.
That's probably all the, yeah, I don't know. Well, that does probably tell us how big this is, too.
Sixteen by eight.
Sixteen.
So.
This one is not inspired yet.
I'm not, I don't know what a standard shed is, does that, does that seem to you like a decent size?
Sounds like a big shed to me, well, I mean.
I don't know.
Residential versus, I, I don't know.
You know anything about a silly shed?
Nope, sorry.
Good size, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, let's just approve it.
But that is very generous of Mr. Paul.
Really?
Of Post Woodworking in Danville, New Hampshire, for donating that, so I will, um.
We do want it to go in the right place, I mean, we don't wanna stick it someplace where.
Oh, I'm sure Chris and Mike will, yeah.
Chris and Mike will work on that, yeah.
Um, so I will.
We, we are gonna plunk it into the wrong place.
Entertain a motion to accept the donation of a sixteen by eight shed from Mr. Paul, really, with, um, deepest gratitude, as presented.
So moved.
Second. Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I am going to, um, not ask for subcommittee reports this evening, because it's getting late.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Um, I know you're all busy, uh, with subcommittees, so I appreciate that, and we will, uh, follow up with that on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Um, unless you think there's something that needs to be said tonight, does anybody?
No.
Okay, um. Is that it?
So we're done?
I think we just have the appro- the stipends, approval of the stipends.
Oh, approval of stipends, okay, for, um.
It's, it, the B.
A ski, right, so it's, so it's for, um, ski art, anime, um, club, musical, game.
Game club.
And anti-bullying club.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, do we have, um, a, a person, one, a different person for each one? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay.
They do go, yeah.
So can I just do it such as that, okay? Uh, chair will entertain a motion to approve stipends for the ski club, the art club, anime club, musical club, game club, and the anti-bullying club.
Okay, so there's also.[1662.12]